Thanks. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We'll begin the meeting with the singing of Oh, Canada. You will notice that today, we are collectively the choir for the National Anthem. So I hope everybody has their singing voices ready. So as you're able, I'd invite you to stand for our National Anthem. It's been moved by Council Schneider that the minutes of the regular meeting held October 5th and the special meetings held October 5th and 19th as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? That is carried unanimously. Any dis- Well, everybody have their German anthem up. We'll, any disclosures of pecuniary interest? No? Okay. Unless otherwise directed, I shall refer communications as listed on the agenda. And there is one item with reference to the Movember 2015 flag request. Okay, done. We'll now move on. Oh, Council Gazola? Go ahead.
I just wondered on that, do we not normally get a copy of that communication? I was just curious as to what it was about.
The Movember flag?
Yeah, what was being requested here?
Oh, they did. I'm not sure why it's not attached, but it would be just the flying of the Movember flag.
Okay, that's, I'm just asking why it was not attached.
Then can we ask staff next time if we can just make sure they're attached? Thank you. Moving on then to, there are no presentations. We'll move on then to item number six, delegations. And we have a number of delegations here to speak with respect to the heritage permit application for 1094 Dune Village Road. I do want to remind delegations that in accordance with council's procedure, we have five minutes for all delegations. At the four-minute mark, the clerk will ring the bell, and that'll mean that you still have one minute to complete your presentation. The first delegation I have for this evening then on this item is Stephen Schleimer. Welcome, Mr. Schleimer.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me here today. I live at 1094 Dune Village Road, the property in question. Just warning you, I'm not much of a public speaker, so hopefully I can get through this. I've owned the house since 2005. I love the neighborhood of my property. There's a frontage of 160 feet and a square footage of 1.886 acres. My dilemma is I've been trying to sell the house for over a year. I'm very concerned about the value of my property. I've had two potential sales follow through already. The last sale was approved by the planners but shot down by council. I feel that there needs to be more clarification on what is and isn't acceptable so that the potential buyers could know, they don't have to spend too much time and know if they plan on going ahead with their, to pursue the property. I would like to pursue myself, pursue the permit to see what I could build, as the second buyer has already dropped out. Please consider in an apple-to-apple comparison, 80-foot lots at half acres is much different than 160-foot lot, which is what I live on and near, close to two acres in size. If I'm going to be held, going to be held building a smaller house so that I compare to a smaller lot, then please consider allowing a severance, if that's possible, so that the new lots and a smaller house would match the existing properties. If I have to keep it as a 160-foot lot with almost two acres, let me or my new buyer build a house that coincides with a lot that size. In discussion with qualified realtors, the marketability of a small house on a massive lot is just not sellable. I'm concerned that my property is now stigmatized and undesirable. I'm being set to be made, I feel that I'm being set to be made an example of. What I really don't understand is that when you consider my existing home is already 45 feet wide, with the garage at 40 feet wide, I have a building frontage of 85 feet. The proposed home was 75 feet, reducing the building frontage by 10 feet. I feel I'm being made to reduce my building frontage. I need to know why. Thank you.
Okay. There are some folks who have questions. Some members of council, Mr. Schleimer. First of all, Council Ionitis.
Thank you for coming in and sharing your story. I just want a little bit more of clarification. How many times have you put up your property for sale?
It's been for sale since, well, it's been for sale for the last year or so, year and a bit. I bought a farm in the meantime, and I don't have no need for it anymore.
Okay. And the sole reason why your property can't sell is-
Yeah, I don't want to carry two mortgages.
Okay. But the sole reason why you can't sell your property is because of the heritage listing? Is that what you're trying to say?
I think that, like, I've had two other people that were into buying this big property, and they, they've tried for a long time, like, they went back and forth with, I think, different meetings and with, I think it was council, Heritage Council. And they actually thought that they were getting really close and that things were going to get approved, and then, and then it was shot down, right? I think that it, there's, I think in the eight-point section of your, of the Heritage Act, or whatever it is, that there's some really vague, vague points in there that, we just can't, we can't get everything set straight, if you know what I mean? I'm not sure if I'm coming across straight.
Okay. And with your discussions with your realtor, you had mentioned you're feeling stigmatized?
Well, it's been, it's been two potential buyers already. We've been in the newspaper. And I'm afraid that people are going to be afraid to come across and put an offer in because it's so hard to sell. I've no, I know other people have bought and tried to sell properties in the heritage communities, and they've had hard times because of all the stipulations involved, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Council Fernandez.
Thanks. Mr. Schleimer, when you purchased in that area, were you aware it was a heritage district?
To a point, yeah. I didn't, I didn't have, the realtor at the time, no, I didn't have an idea that it was that, like, what was all involved in living in a heritage area.
And have you learned in the ensuing years? You said you've been there for 10 years. Have you not learned what a heritage district meant in those years?
Oh, yeah. Yep. I didn't think, I didn't think the process for, like, for building a new home would be that, like, I've heard that the previous people that were looking at buying the house, they went through quite a few meetings. I didn't think it would take that long for them to get that all figured out.
Okay. But the understanding was that they were different, that he had not attended a heritage committee meeting before he started talking about the proposal for the house? Were you aware of that?
No.
Okay. So he hadn't attended that. Are there other large lots in that heritage district?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, quite a few.
And are there other large lots with smaller houses than yours?
I'm not sure. That'll probably come up in the, in the meeting later. Someone, I had someone else checking into that. But there are, there are some bigger lots with some bigger houses. I'm sure there are some, some big lots with some smaller houses as well.
Okay. And you're saying you're feeling stigmatized, but is it not possible that the problem is the lack of understanding from the real estate agents that you're working with, that this is a heritage district and that there are certain guidelines that need to be adhered to?
No. No, I think, like, I looked at the eight points. I can't remember where it is in the Heritage Act, or I can't remember quite where it is, but there's eight points what they, what they expect, like, the facade, the height of the building.
That's the right, it's the bylaw for the heritage situation.
The bylaw, yep. And there's some points that say, give or take, like, it says comparable, like, if you use words like comparable, or, I can't, I don't have it right in front of me, so I don't know offhand, but it almost seemed a little vague, vague to me. And, and that's where I think the, because the city planners had, had, had thought that everything was going to be okay with this house, and then, then councils said no to it because of what they believed in, right? So I think, I think what it is, is there's, it depends on how you look at it, from, from what I, from what I read in that bylaw.
So just, just for clarification, it didn't come to council, it only came to the heritage committee? It never made it to council?
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure how you guys, yeah, okay.
Just, you know, just to help, help you understand.
Okay. Council Davy? Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that those actually did come to council? The two big, massive homes?
No, no, no. We're talking about the last proposal. The gentleman-
Most recent, oh, the internal, okay. Pardon me.
Yes, okay. Go ahead, Council Fernandez.
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gazola?
I think, I was going to ask you how long you've lived in the neighborhood?
10 years. I've been in Kitchener my whole life.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
I've been in Kitchener my whole life, so I've, like, as a kid, I've gone through there, going to Conso College, been going through, it's a beautiful neighborhood.
Were you, there are certain special bylaws that relate to that area. Were you or your real estate agent not aware of those?
Well, yeah, we're aware of the eight points and all that. Like I said before, the way, the way we interpret them, and, and the way that the, the previous buyers were interpreting, it didn't, I, I don't, I don't think it's cut, cut, cut and dry, if I can say it that way.
Okay. I'll, I was, in a lot of ways, it's very clear what needs to be done, but I'll leave that, it'll come up later. Thank you.
Council Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My questions have been asked, but I do have one of staff when you get there.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Council Singh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, I'm not going to go over if you knew or didn't knew about the heritage district and the subsequent requirements and restrictions of that area. Now, as a property owner in that neighborhood, and someone who's familiar with the act, quite simply, straightforward, do you think it's complimentary to the property owner's rights and actually-
Sorry, complimentary to?
To the homeowner's rights of ownership of his land, and be, be able to, you know, do as what you're proposing of improvements or new construction? Do you think it's fair, those requirements that are set out by the bylaw? Are they fair?
I think as long as I, as long as we follow the rules, but that we know what those rules are, like I, like I said, like, with the height of the building, they had restrictions at 28 feet, thereabouts. Like, that's what I read in there, right? I believe that when you buy a property, you should be able to, to build something that you want, but I can understand, like, with heritage, it's a, it's a, there are certain guidelines you have to follow, so you're not building some crazy-looking house, right?
Right. But you're making effort to what you're proposing to be close to what the, the requirements of the bylaw sets out?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Council Davy?
Thank you. I just needed some clarification on the number. So you, the first time someone came to council, I guess my question is, how many people now have come and-
Two. Two different buyers.
Two different buyers, including the one now? I thought you said that they had.
I'm, I'm the one that's going to take, take over the permit. I just want to see, what we're trying to do is, just to see that we can have something that's going to go through so that we can eventually build some kind of house?
So to clarify, the person that was actually behind this permit is no longer-
No.
And you're, you're still hoping for approval of this permit?
Well, I still want to be able, like, so that if someone else, if I decide to build a house, then I can build what I want to build, or just so I know what we can do, what we can and can't do. And if there is someone that's going to, like, it's still for sale, so then if, that I can lay it right out on the line and say, "Look, this is what you have to follow," right?
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Those are all the questions that we have of you. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks.
Council Etherington, did you want to leave your question for staff till the end, or now? Okay, go ahead.
Question to staff on this, the, Mr. Schleimer is suggesting that it was approved by planners, rejected by heritage. Can you give me an explanation for that, Leo?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The heritage permit application was recommended for approval by staff. Staff prepared a staff report, and we recommended conditional approval, approval with five conditions. That went to Heritage Kitchener Committee, and the committee voted on the motion to approve the application, but that motion failed, and so the recommendation before council is refusal of the application.
Thank you, then. And second question, how long has this been a heritage area?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Heritage Conservation District in Upper Dune is the city's first heritage district, and it was approved by the Ontario Municipal Board in 1988.
Sorry, in?
1988.
Thank you.
Council Davy, did you have a question with staff? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I think this might be relevant before we hear from the delegations. Supposing council were inclined to go in the opposite direction to Heritage Kitchener and approve this application, does this tie the specific design of the house to that property, or would the applicant have to come back and look for a new home?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the application is very specific in terms of it having specific drawings and plans having been attached to the application, so it is specific. If an application or proposal is made down the road, and it is different from the design that is proposed as part of this application, then yes, a new heritage permit application would be required.
Okay, thank you.
Council Ionitis?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. When we typically get in a heritage district, a property owner who wants to do an improvement and all that stuff, in this situation, is it, does it always come to Heritage Kitchener?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of heritage permit applications, applications can be processed through delegated approval in certain situations, and in others, it has to go through Heritage Kitchener Committee. So the, there is criteria in the delegated approval bylaw that determines when an application can be processed through delegated approval, and when it needs to go through Heritage Committee and council.
Okay. Can you give me an example of a delegated?
So, for delegated approval, it would be applications that meet the criteria of the heritage district plan, for applications that are minor or routine. Those are examples of ones that we can deal with through delegated approval. It should be noted that whenever an application is made through delegated approval for a property within a heritage district, we do speak to the representative who's, of that heritage district who sits on Heritage Kitchener, to make sure that that representative is in agreement with processing the application through delegated approval.
Okay. So my one, my other question is, so if, if a property owner comes with a proposal that is fully supported by yourself and, and heritage staff, why, why, why does it come to Heritage Kitchener?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In certain situations, such as this one, a demolition is also proposed. So one of the criteria in the delegated approval bylaw is that applications for demolition cannot be processed through delegated approval, they must go through Heritage Committee and council. And so in this example, the application is not only for the construction of a new building, but also for the demolition of the existing building, garage, and shed. So both proposals, in terms of the demolition and the new construction, were made in the same application.
Okay. But I'm not understanding why Heritage Kitchener, the committee, why, why do they have a choice over this? When you're, you, you're yourself as a professional, and these are just citizens who don't necessarily represent that area? I, I need a better understanding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Ontario Heritage Act states that where a heritage committee has been established by the municipality, the municipality shall seek the advice of its heritage committee on, on heritage permit applications. So there is a mandated requirement under the Ontario Heritage Act to seek the advice of the municipal heritage committee for applications. Notwithstanding that, council has approved a delegated approval bylaw, and under certain situations, and if they meet the criteria, then they can be processed through delegated approval and approved by staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Gazola?
When this issue was discussed previously this year, when there was a previous application, did this council not pass a new resolution dealing with that area?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, following the withdrawal of the applications in 2014 that were made for this property, the matter was discussed at council in terms of what can staff do to improve the situation in terms of considering applications in, in Upper Dune. And we implemented a number of, of things to, to try to improve the situation. One is that we prepared a supplementary document that contains specific examples of residential buildings that have been approved for construction, and this document was prepared with the input and support of the ward councillor, and that was, that document was made available to prospective purchasers of this property. We also, in, through a council resolution, invite the ward councillor to participate in meetings for significant applications that are made within this heritage conservation district. And again, that happened in this instance as well. And to encourage engagement with the community, we circulated this heritage permit application to the Society for the Preservation of Upper Dune, and invited them to provide input and feedback on the application before the staff report was prepared.
Okay, that, and that's the propos, the, the part that I thought was a bit of a slight change, where you, where you did circulate to the neighborhood what was happening here.
That's, that's correct. Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's, there's no mechanism under the Ontario Heritage Act to circulate applications, heritage permit applications, but through the direction of council, we circulated this particular heritage permit application to Spud for their comment.
Did you hear from the neighborhood before staff made its recommendation?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Mayor, the Society for the Preservation of Upper Dune did provide written comments back to staff. Those comments were considered by staff in the preparation of the staff report, and in fact, in our staff report, we comment on a number of the comments that were made by staff, by Spud.
Was staff in agreement with the requests, or the comments made by the, by the Spud area?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Staff were in agreement with some of the comments made by Spud and in disagreement with others. The comments that we disagreed with were relative to the height of, of, of the building and the size of the building and the materials, so we continued to recommend approval of the application. However, we did agree with comments with regard to matters in relation to the timing of the demolition and the new construction, in terms of making sure that a demolition permit would not be issued until such time as a building permit was issued, and we in fact made conditions of the approval to ensure that that timing took place to allow for both the new construction and demolition at the same time.
But there were concerns with three, three parts, height, size, and materials.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, correct. There continue to be concerns from, from Spud. However, in staff's analysis of the application, we continued to recommend approval. We did add a condition indicating, asking the, that the owner give, that the applicant give consideration to reducing the size of, of the, of the building, the proposed building, as well as giving consideration to using brick as the material of choice rather than stone. But those were worded in such a way as to give the, the applicant the ability to choose whether they wanted to go with those materials or not.
Thank you.
Council Schneider?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Vervanevic. Mr. Schleimer, in his presentation, expressed a wish to possibly sever that lot. Is, is that allowable on heritage property?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms, there have been severances in the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District, and those severances have been successful. Those applications would need to meet the regulations of the zoning, and in this case, in the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District, there are minimum lot width requirements of 100 feet, and minimum lot area requirements of half an acre. In this case, this property is 160 feet wide, and so it is questionable whether that severance would be, would meet the regulations of the zoning bylaw. You would need two lots of 100 feet in order to meet the regulations.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We'll now move on to our delegations. The remainder of the delegations, rather. Steve Hamowen? Not sure, did I pronounce that correctly, sir? Okay. Feel, feel free to correct me if need be.
Just going to bring my laptop, though, so if you ask questions, I can, I can look stuff. Okay. I don't know how to address, because I don't really do this.
Yeah, just make yourselves comfortable and do your thing.
My neighborhood, yeah. My name's Steve Hamowen. I live at 1112 Dune Village Road, which is the property adjacent to the property in discussion. I came here today just to kind of propose some numbers that I, I took off of the City of Kitchener wicked awesome interactive mapping system. That was unbelievable. But I do encourage that, this was me working late into the evening, so I'd like anybody of the reviewers to double-check the numbers that I'm about to propose and make sure that they're accurate. So the proposal contemplates building with a frontage of 75 feet on a lot of 160 feet on basically a two-acre property set back to about 180 feet. And I'm going to just throw out there that I'm going to suggest that this almost meets or beats the averages set by the current houses located in the heritage district, whether the new houses that have been built, the new severances that have happened, whether it's on any of the old houses that have been built that are actually heritage houses. And I'm going to do that in a couple different ways. So first, what I'm going to do is I'm going to look at the raw building frontage, and, and I'm going to look at a number and say, 31% of the total building frontages in the heritage district are greater than 70 feet. And of the ones that are not up to 70 feet of frontage, those houses are representative of houses that are on properties that are less than an acre. So whereas the subject property is almost two acres, so a little bit of apples and oranges And then, so I wanted to normalize these, I'm a math guy, I love math. I wanted to normalize these. What I did is I looked at the smaller properties and said, "Okay, well, if we look at the total building frontage," and I'm adding up ancillary buildings, garage, house, looking at what the facade is at the front, add up all of that and divided what the lot frontage is, and then we can kind of get some averages and kind of look at it and normalize the properties. So 80% of the properties that I looked at are more than 5%. Wait, oh. I got a little out of order here. Okay. So, oh, here we go, sorry. Sorry, I missed this part here, but the lot frontage. We'll finish that one up before I move on to footprint. So to normalize these, the total building frontages, the average number is 58%. So if the lot frontage is 100 feet, then it's 58 feet is used for the building. That's averaging every building on, I'm not only using Dune Village Road, I'm not using Oregon or any of the side roads or whatever, that are still in the district, but just not part of this. So the proposal of 75 feet on 160 lot is less than that. So in essence, he's actually less than what the normal is, looking at all of the lot coverage is based on a ratio. Then the second thing I looked at is I looked at the footprint of the building. So, and the footprint is, in the way I, and if I'm not using the right words, please help correct me, but the footprint I look at, I look down on that, again wicked awesome system that you guys have, and it shows what the building looks like. And I can actually measure everything, which is amazing. It's just awesome.
I think we're gonna start promoting it that way.
Yeah, get the point across?
Awesome mapping system.
Yeah, no, every place should do this. I'm a Realtor, by the way, so I'd love this. This is amazing. So anyway, so when I look at the lot coverage and add up all the buildings, 80% of the buildings are more than 5% of the lot coverage. And of those 80%, 43% of them, a subset, are more than, are greater than 10% lot coverage. Some of them are significantly higher. Oh, I'll be quick. And the one that's being proposed is at 5% lot coverage. So it's on the conservative side. And it being mitigated by the, being deep into the property, I think it's effective. So I'm a person who, I know I just bought a house in the neighborhood, so I'm new to the house, but I'm not new to the neighborhood. I grew up in Dune. I went to Dune High School. I went to Pioneer Park. I played all my adventures in Schneider's Creek. But what's really important is I think that even though I am new, but from the area, that we should look at a representation as equal. One person's vote should be held the same as somebody else's vote, irrespective of tenure. And what I say is, when we talk about the note being sent out to all the people in the neighborhood, don't be deceived. I didn't receive any note about this. I only know this because Steve's my neighbor. And I talked to a couple of the other people in the neighborhood. So Spud received it, not the neighborhood. There's a very big distinction in that. And so again, pursuant to what he had said as well, you know, if you don't believe the numbers, check them out. If the numbers still aren't good enough, you know, look for that variance in the rules for the 80 feet of frontage, because there's a lot of properties underneath 80 feet of frontage, and I've got the numbers right here.
Thank you very much, sir. We have a number of questions for you. Counselor Gazola.
You stated that you grew up in Dune. Did you live in this area where your house is?
No, I went to school in this area.
But you did live in this heritage area.
No.
Did you grow up in the heritage area?
I did not grow up in the heritage district. I grew up in the area in which the properties are located.
I'm familiar with your property, 1122.
No, not 1122. That's the big house. Mine's the little, I'll call it the cottage in the city. Don't judge me by my cottage. It's small.
Where are you in relation to 1122?
I'm right beside him.
And do you, 1122 sort of stands out. Do you agree with that house in that area?
I think there's a lot of finishes on 1122 that aren't indicative of supporting the heritage. I would agree with that. The size of the house, I'm not really there to comment on the size of the house. I'm not a big fan of stucco myself, but I think that.
Okay, I must say, I thought you were with 1122 in the.
No, I'm 1112.
The question I kept having was how that got approved.
Yeah, I wonder that myself, because, yeah, how that got approved, I wonder, because I look at what he's doing, what the other one has done, and it's not even similar.
Let's focus on this application, though, Counselor Gazola, if we can.
1112, the pizza guy messes it up, everything on the small house.
You won't be able to answer my question, because that was my question.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks. So just so everybody is clear, you're the little brown house to the right. Okay. Your numbers are fascinating and certainly interesting, but I think what heritage districts speak to is not just the, you know, the comparison and the variance between how much, how big a house is on the lot, but the entire heritage district and the respect for the heritage district. When you purchased your house, were you aware of the heritage restrictions?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so I would expect that you plan on maintaining the house within the integrity of the Dune Heritage, the Upper Dune Heritage District Conservation.
100%.
Okay. Okay, so I guess that leaves me with sort of the last question, is that when you're comparing different lot sizes and different footprints, are you also comparing what fits in to the community with the houses that have long stand, been longstanding in that area?
Well, I looked at both. I looked at, I wasn't looking at anything that's qualitative. I wasn't looking at any of that stuff, because I can't put that in an Excel spreadsheet. All I did was looking at lot frontages and looking at square footages. And now I did look at certain things, like there's certain houses there that have four car garages, there's one that have three car garages, and that have been recently built that has a three car garage up on a hill in the area. So I look at that and I go, okay, well, how did that, and just like Mr. Gazola, sorry, my apologies, I couldn't read your name there, but just as he had stated, is how did that get in there? And then I look up on the hill and say, well, how did that get in there? And this seems sort of more like, the qualitative is the more important part, where the quantitative is what gives the standard for everybody, so not somebody's getting special treatment, where somebody else is trying to do it right and getting vilified for it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Annetzki.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. Just for clarification, did you see your address is 1112?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I was just trying to look up pictures here to see whether your house is here, is not here.
Don't judge me by.
I just want to remind members of council that we can't ask people for their addresses.
No, I know that.
I'll give it freely.
It's just that we have a document here with addresses of pictures of those houses. I'm just trying to identify whether it was in here or not, and it wasn't. So how big is your house, roughly?
I think the footprint of it was 2,100 square feet was the footprint of the house. That's looking at the house plus the garage.
Okay. And what year was it built roughly?
1954, I think is what it was. 52.
Okay, so it's in the 50s.
Yeah.
So it's about 50, 60, 60 years old.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, so do you feel your house fits into the character of the Upper Dune?
Not at all, no. It's got aluminum siding on it, just the form and function of it doesn't fit. Like, when I look across at some of their houses that are over there, they're stunning. Yellow brick houses, my seductive nature looks at yellow brick houses and I love them. I think when I look across the street at them, I have this beautiful landscape of historic houses. And then when I sit on the other side of the street, and I look at Steve's place and my place and go, man, I want to look at the back door. So I don't know if that answers that question.
Okay, well, I'm not too sure. Anyways, do you feel that the, one, this is a two-part question, do you feel that the house at 1122 that we sort of identified being as a comparison, it itself fits into the character of the Upper Dune as a heritage home?
So you're asking about the one not in question, but the one that's down the road?
The 1122.
The one, okay. I don't, again, when I look at the qualitative side of things, which is the stucco, the large facade on the front without having a breakout on it, I think, I don't, like, that's my personal opinion, but I don't like looking at things qualitatively. I like looking at things where it's very precise. So I wouldn't be the one to ask the question on that one. So I'm not qualified to answer that question. I think that's where the heritage committee is really needs to pick it up there.
Well, I appreciate that, but you know, you live there, you have an opinion, you sort of say, well, how'd that get built and how'd that get built? I mean, that's an opinion.
Well, for me, it's about equality. It's not about whether that house fits or not. The fact of the matter is there. And I hear a lot of statements saying, well, that one slipped through the cracks, and then another one, well, that one got in because of this, and, well, that one got in because of this. And it seems like unless you do some sort of what, you know, as an outsider, looks like a backdoor deal, that's the only way to get a property to be built, severed, or anything in the neighborhood. And I just don't think that's fair.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Ionidas.
He just stated the question I wanted. He just answered it for me, saying it's unfair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to the, thank you, sir.
Oh, cheers, thank you.
We'll move on to the next delegation, Karen Tilt. Welcome, Ms. Tilt.
My name is Karen Tilt, and I live at 1059 Dune Village Road. We, the residents, are here tonight to express our concern about homes being proposed and approved by heritage staff planners. Our concerns focus on height, size and building materials. The latest staff report for the proposed house at 1094 states, the height of the dwelling at 31 feet, though slightly higher than two nearby 28-foot historic buildings, is within the range of a number of existing buildings in the district. According to staff, three feet higher is acceptable. If 31 feet is going to be the acceptable height, then the next house to be proposed could be a height of 34 feet. We now have a house that is six feet higher than the original historic homes. The bylaw states, the height of new buildings shall be similar to the height of the historic building stock. If the tallest historic building is 28 feet, then the proposed house at 1094 should be no higher. Nowhere in the bylaw does it mention that new homes are to be within the range in regards to height. You may think three feet is not significant, but when you build a house of this magnitude, it is. Two new homes recently built on Dune Village Road were required to build their homes within the height of the surrounding historic homes. If these two homes were required to follow the bylaw, then why does staff feel that the proposed house at 1094 should be exempt and think 31 feet would be an acceptable height? The staff report indicates that the size of the proposed building is at the high end of house sizes within the district. The bylaw states, new buildings should be complementary to the proportion and scale of the district. I went on MPAC, the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation, and got the square footage of the new homes on Oregon Court and Dune Village Road. The largest home on Oregon Court is 3,533 square feet. The proposed house at 1094 is 4,675, which makes it 1,142 square feet larger. The largest home on Dune Village Road is 3,140 square feet. This makes the proposed house 1,535 square feet larger. We do not understand how and why heritage staff are approving houses that are well beyond the largest homes in the district and think that the massive size will not detract or negatively impact the village. Staff identifies stone cladding on the front elevation as consistent with the heritage district plan policies. In their report, staff feel it is an appropriate material for new buildings, although there are several historic houses in the immediate vicinity that utilize brick. The bylaw states, new buildings respect the main building materials found on existing buildings. The existing homes in the immediate vicinity are all historic, and they are all made of brick. In fact, the majority of new homes in the district are also made of brick. Why would staff approve a front elevation made of stone cladding, which is not a typical material used in the district? From the staff report dated December the night 2014, number CSD 14117, applicants withdrew their application because an agreement could not be reached between heritage staff and the applicants. On the recommendation of council, the applicants were encouraged to consider revisions based on the concerns raised by Heritage Kitchener, the residents of Upper Dune and council. Heritage planning staff reviewed the revised elevations and determined that some of the revisions were not consistent with the policies of Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District Plan. We are in similar, we are in a similar situation tonight, where the proposed house is not consistent with the policies of Upper Dune. Heritage Kitchener once again made the correct decision in declining the heritage permit for 1094. Tonight, we ask council to decline the demolition permit and the application for the construction of a new single dwelling house on the basis that the proposed house is not compatible with the heritage characteristics and attributes of Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District. We are asking council to honor, respect and enforce bylaw 8817 in order to protect and preserve our unique community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tilt. We have several questions for you. Counselor Ionidas.
Yes, thank you for coming in and with your presentation. Sorry, my voice, I'm losing my voice. You had mentioned the biggest house on the street is about, what, 3,000 square feet?
Which street are you referring to, Dune Village or Oregon Court?
I'm not sure. I'm just going by what you said. You went really kind of fast, so.
Okay, the largest house on Oregon Court, which is also within the district, and I think when I read the report of staff, they all say, they often refer to within the district. So I went on for Oregon Court. The largest house there is 3,533 square feet. The proposed house at 1094 is 4,675, which is 1,142 feet larger than the largest house on Oregon. Dune Village Road, the largest house is 3,140 square feet, which then compared to 4,675, is 1,535 square feet larger.
Okay, so would you be okay with a house that was proposed at 3,140 square feet then?
I would be happy that the, going back to following the bylaw, where it states that they, let me see where my size here. That the bylaw states that new buildings should be complementary to the proportion and scale of the district. So when we look at proportion and scale, that refers to the size. Obviously, some of the, the largest home in the historic building is about 1884, 1,884, so under 2,000 square feet. A lot of the new homes that have been built that are new are well below 3,533. In fact, if you want numbers, Oregon Court, there are several houses. One house is 2,393, another house is 2,750. The largest house is 3,533, another house is 2,505, another house is 2,427, another house is 3,000. The proposed house is 4,675, so it's even larger than the existing houses that are there. Dune Village Road, the latest homes that are built, 3,140, 2,166 and 3,000.
Okay, so wouldn't it be fair for this property owner, if he wanted to propose a property out of, if we're going by proportional, at 3,140, wouldn't it be fair for him to do that?
I think that we needed, we would need to discuss that further. I'm not prepared to put a number on a house. I just look at the numbers that are already here. I could ask you that why couldn't a new applicant build a 2,393 square foot, which is a house on Oregon Court?
Is your home a heritage home?
No, it is not.
So it's a newer build?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks, Karen, and thanks for the very detailed research that you've been doing on this. Can you just tell me how long your family has lived in the Dune Village Road area?
We have lived in Dunes since 1832.
Okay. And what are one of the concerns that you and your family has been seeing over the last, let's say, five to seven years that's happening in your area?
We are not opposed to new homes coming in. What we are opposed to is the size that the latest, and we've only had it within the last year, I say, I would say, that the size of the homes that are being proposed, the bylaw refers to grandiose, which is showy. And we feel that the homes that are being proposed and approved are definitely that compared to the homes that are in the area. We have had new homes go up that, yes, they are built in 2014, 15, but they are not overpowering. The styles of last year and even this style of this year with the stone cladding, the height, the size, the size of the house is, you know, 4,675 square feet, but that doesn't include the 1,100-foot three-car garage, which is going to add to the. which is going to add to the massiveness of the size. Anybody who's driven down Dune Village Road recently and has seen the house at eleven twenty-two, it just doesn't fit in. It's massive. Yes, it's set on a good-sized property, but compared to the other homes in the area, it is massive. The homes that are built on Dune Village Road, they have large properties, they have smaller homes, and that is just, that's what makes our community unique. Because we do have large properties and we take pride in those properties, the size of the homes, they're just, they just don't fit in, they overtower. One of the houses in the district, the historic homes, is about sixteen hundred square feet. You can put three of those homes into the four thousand six hundred and seventy-five square foot home. The massiveness and the size, and if all the homes are brick, why would we accept stone cladding?
Okay, thank you so much for your answer and all the work you've been doing.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anetski.
Thank you for coming in, making your presentation and comments. You said your family's been there since the mid eighteen-fifties or something of that nature, but you've lived there all your life as well, right?
Yes, I have.
Okay, would you say that the character of the community from your early days living there, your childhood days to today, has remained the same or has changed in terms of new development on Dune Village Road?
Dune Village has remained basically untouched for a long time. Within the last ten years or so, that's when new houses have come in. So yes, the streetscape has changed. I would say a lot of the houses that, the new houses that have been built, have been built according to the bylaw. The height is similar to the historic homes that are there, and they're very simple-designed. I feel that the proposed, the new proposed houses coming in are not that, they're not simple-designed. They're there to be a showpiece of, look at my huge house in this beautiful area.
So the one at eleven twenty-two, you're saying is the large one. This one that's proposed before us is even larger than that, is that correct?
The eleven twenty-two house, I believe it's, I'm not sure with the square footage, the MPAC did not have that square footage. I compared it to the homes in, on Oregon Court, which is, this proposed house is even larger than those, and those are good-sized homes.
So this home here that's proposed before us in this application, and the other one that was built that you keep referring to, they're out of character, or do they meet the character of the Upper Dune area?
They are definitely out of character for the Upper Dune area.
I'm sorry?
They are definitely out of character. They negatively impact the streetscape.
So really, they should be located in another area of the city that has the homes of that type of style and grandioseness, like Hidden Valley or something like that?
The proposed houses of last year and ten ninety-four would look very lovely in an area like Hidden Valley.
Okay, now, there's mentioning of a severance that was happening, that was suggested. If one comes forward and two homes of maybe two thousand square feet on each side, more or less, or in that area, would be proposed, and not being of a grandiose style, but being sort of something that fits into the character, would that be acceptable to you?
No. Why? Because it doesn't follow the zoning bylaw of a hundred-square-foot frontage. You have to have a hundred-foot frontage in order to build a house. So if we were to sever and make them smaller, then we'd be going against the bylaw. And that's what our concerns are now, that a lot of things are not following the policies that are in the bylaw. So no, it would not be acceptable.
Okay, so that hundred-and-sixty-foot, if you divide it by two, would be eighty feet each, sort of thing, and it doesn't meet the hundred-foot, so that's what you're against?
That's right. It's not a hundred foot. So we can't, in my opinion, we can't allow an eighty-foot frontage when everyone else that has had to build a house in the past had to have the hundred-foot frontage.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gazzola.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you a question, and I think it's a thing that bothers a lot of people in that when they think that they own a property, that it's theirs, they can do whatever they want and that. Now, you've lived in this area for a considerable period. You were around when, in nineteen eighty-eight, when the council of the day passed a special bylaw setting up this area. Can you tell me in your own words what you believe was the intent of that bylaw? This is something that people have difficulty understanding.
I believe that the intent of this bylaw was to preserve the uniqueness of Upper Dune. I know that is often referred to, the vagueness of the bylaw as far as a height and size, but actually, the bylaw, in my opinion, was very well-written. They did not use specific numbers, but they used wording like proportion, compatibility, scale, and dimension, so that, and they used the historic homes as a guideline. Is that answered your question?
No, I can appreciate that.
It was designed to keep the uniqueness of the area. When you go down Dune Village, all of the homes are different, and some of them are, most of them are made of brick. The odd one that was built fifty-some years ago might have used a different building material, but they're on different lot sizes, they're on different, the tallest one is twenty-eight feet. So the uniqueness of the area is because the houses are so different. You don't go down a street and they're all looking the same.
Do you remember back when the council of the day put that bylaw into place? Was there a lot of discussion? Was there any discussion?
I think I was a little bit too young when it came in, so I'm not sure. I know that the people that were on SPUD spent a lot of time and energy working with the mayor at the time and council, and then taking it to the OMB to get this area designated.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the questions that we have for you, Ms. Tilt. Thank you for coming in this evening. Next is Mark Bowden.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Mark Bowden. My wife Barbara and I own at eleven fifteen Dune Village Road, a heritage building in Upper Dune, right across the road from this proposal. We've raised our two children, which are the fourth generation in the home, and have been comfortable with only one bathroom and a single-car garage. We have about sixteen hundred square feet on a sixty-six-foot-wide lot. In the spirit of conserving the intentions of the heritage bylaw, I urge the city planners to look beyond the obvious benefits of the proposal, such as a net increase in property tax revenue in these oversized buildings that will create. In terms of dollars, doing the right thing and being a good steward is not always the most lucrative decision. We live in a row of nine homes, seven of which are owned by members of the same family, including my wife. Therefore, we expect to be permanent residents and here for the very long term. Many of us are approaching retirement or are retired on fixed incomes. The disproportionately large building will have a much higher value than the existing neighboring residences and will eventually inflate our assessment in property taxes. It could be argued that our existing homes would increase in property value accordingly, but that isn't a consideration when you're here for life and from generation to generation. We appreciate the perspective buyers would like to live here, too. We, as residents, we also have family roots here, and we frequently welcome new neighbors. The area, however, encompasses a surrounding subdivision in addition to our district. And in relation to the existing homes for sale, if such large homes are required by the prospective buyers, we suggest that they'd be less restrictive trying in another subdivision or in the countryside without having to deal with heritage issues. Upper Dune is a desirable district in which to live. The community and heritage conservation standards enhance the desirability of our district, so why would anyone with a sincere interest in being part of the district community attempt to upstage their surrounding new neighbors with a proposed monster home, which we would see as out of place? When you overlay my home to the scale drawings, front elevation, it would fit on the front The bylaw includes maintaining a small village atmosphere, and the architecture and style of the building stock is essentially vernacular. These are not grandiose buildings smacking of flamboyant proportions and decoration. Rather, they are modest structures of simple, pleasing details. But generally, the building stock is of a quiet, reserved character. Our opposition lies in the flamboyant proportions of this proposal due to and because the absence of specific square footage limits relative to the existing and pre-existing acceptable homes in the district, which is, as was said, about thirty-two hundred square feet. In addition to the collection of concerns that have been previously noted, I noticed the proposed sighting of the building on the lot shows the garage opening thirty feet from the east or the property on the right-hand side. This leaves fifty-five feet on the left side of the building. We would hope there's no unfavorable hidden agenda for this open space. The building is unproportionately skewed to the right, making it a tight maneuver for vehicles using the side-entry garages. It's unnecessarily close to the neighbor at eleven twelve. The proposal is to use the current center driveway, but that would be difficult since it lines up with the center of the building in its position. In addition to the other concerns about excessive size, if the garage position remained, the resulting building would be better sighted in the center of the lot. It would improve the driveway alignment, aesthetics, and privacy for both the new and existing residents. It's clear that the village residents contesting this proposal do not consider Oregon Court as a valid prerequisite for future building decisions, though it has been included in some comparative observations tonight. But this is because its proposed development, even according to the roadmap in the current bylaw, included a fifty-to-one-hundred-foot green space strip between the back of our property on Dune Village Road and the new road, and the name was to be Heir's Court after a historically noteworthy village resident. These things did not take place. Later, the development was then changed from Monarch Homes to Charleston. Resulting home site plans and the name of the street were not subject to consultation with the residents.
Sir, if I can ask you to wrap up, please?
Pardon?
If I can ask you to wrap up, please?
Yes, I'm almost at the end. Also, the recently almost-complete monster home at eleven twenty-two Dune Village Road was not subject to consultation with the residents, and heritage approval was completely overlooked when the building permit was issued. As residents in Heritage District at the time of the bylaw, we don't want to gradually become the exceptions rather than the norm. Passed-overs sites don't justify future ones, and we urge the city to consider the greater good in this matter. If it's not sufficiently addressed without having walked through the village and seen firsthand what it's like, that would be sad. Consider the number of affected citizens in the district presently, the spirit and value of the heritage bylaw, and the Heritage Committee's views. Prospective buyers need to reconsider the excessive mass and positioning of this home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowden. We have several questions. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you, Mark, thanks for coming in, and I like the picture that you drew of your house fitting on the front porch.
This one?
That's a great picture, that shows exactly what some of the concerns are. I just want to be brief because you're covering a lot of the same territory that the rest of your residents did. In the time that you and your family have lived there, what are some of the biggest concerns that you've had, that you've seen happening in your neighborhood?
Aside from the great increase in traffic, it's been in the last few years that some of the buildings that have gone up. And of course, Oregon Court I was in before, they actually took the barn down and started to build a street, so that was unfolding in a very surprising way.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much for your time.
Counselor Anetski.
Do you live in a heritage-type home?
Yes. Eighteen ninety-four.
Eighteen ninety-four, okay. I just happened to be looking at a photo here of eleven fifteen Dune Village Road, a part of a package we received for Heritage Kitchener back a while ago. The, you've noticed, how long have you lived there?
I, myself, have lived there twelve years. But the family's been in the house since the nineteen forties.
Okay. Do you feel the character of the area over the last few years has changed compared to what it was when the Upper Dune District became initiated in eighty-eight?
Not other than what I've already commented on. It's a very comfortable, most comfortable place to be. Most of the buildings are kept up nicely and...
Do you feel, not do you feel, but you mentioned at the beginning that you will be across the street or are across the street from the existing house or the proposed house? The existing house being eleven twenty-two?
I'm diagonal to it.
Diagonal to which one? Both of them?
I'm across the street and one over from it.
From the one that's there right now? Okay, so do you feel that the one that's there right now and the one that's proposed here before us fit into the character of the area as a historical home?
You're talking about Steve's Brown House? That's directly across from me? It was built in a period before the heritage guidelines were set up, so it was kind of grandfathered in, right?
Okay, thank you. Okay, those are all the questions we have for you, sir. Thank you for coming in this evening. Our next allegation is Edward Schnur.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilors. My name is Ed Schnur. My wife, Margaret, and I are longtime residents of Dune. I have lived there for thirty-seven years, and prior to that, within a half hour of the village. My wife has lived there all her life. The home we own and live in is eleven twenty-one Dune Village Road. It's one of the historic homes in the Upper Dune Plan. We understand the recent application for demolition permits for ten ninety-four has been withdrawn. However, newly completed construction of eleven twenty-one was previously approved without resident participation. In addition to lack of notice, this development brings into question Heritage Planning Staff's interpretation of bylaw eighty-eight seventeen, which states that new development should be of good contemporary design, complementary to height, proportion, scale, and character of existing residences in the district. The new structure at eleven twenty-two does not in any way reflect this character, neither did the application for ten ninety-four. We are very concerned about this setting a precedent for this type of development, especially when there was no provision for input. We are equally concerned about new applications of similar nature. We are encouraged to read in the Kitchener Post, January first, two thousand and fifteen, "Mr. Mayor, you said a big part of creating strong neighborhoods is creating better opportunity for interaction to enhance a sense of community. As longtime residents of Dune, we feel very much the same. The residents of Upper Dune wish to avoid continued confrontation. We strongly feel that the building envelope of any new development should be limited to a maximum square footage mutually agreed upon among planning staff, Upper Dune residents, SPUD, and representatives of our Heritage Advisory Committee. As small homes were proposed for Hidden Valley or Deer Ridge, they'd be laughed out for nonconformity. It's no different for us in Upper Dune, except that we live in an area that represents part of the city of Kitchener's heritage. Upper Dune was the first heritage district established in the city of Kitchener. It would be a shame to see its integrity jeopardized. We are not opposed to new development. However, longtime residents of Upper Dune, we want new development to look like it belongs there." Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We have a couple, a few questions for you. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, thank you for coming in, Mr. Schnur. Are you a member of SPUD?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay. And so, are you aware that, let me just rephrase, so I've heard eleven twenty-two mentioned a few times, and I just want to ask, you know, if you understand that there is a spot on Heritage Kitchener for a resident of your Heritage District, and that spot is currently vacant, have you ever considered joining the Heritage Kitchener so that you could have been there, for example, when eleven twenty-two was proposed, or any of your neighbors, for example?
Yes, but with eleven twenty-two being proposed, should... Yes, but with eleven-twenty-two being proposed, should not SPUD have been involved in it? We have a very competent person on SPUD who would have let us know that eleven-twenty-two was being built.
So, there's a process. I don't want to get into a debate with you at all. I'm just asking if you had considered joining Heritage Kitchener and...
Well, I'm very busy. I'm retired, but I found lots of things to do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I babysit. I've got, I still play a few sports myself and...
Fair enough. Just wanted to ask you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ionitis.
My questions are, I have a question to staff. It's not to Mr. Schnur.
Okay. We'll come back to you at the end. Counselor Janetski.
Thank you for your presentation once again. And the home that you live, it's a heritage older home?
Yes, it is.
How old?
Oh, boy. It's built in eighteen-eighty-four.
Okay, so one-hundred-and-twenty-five years old, more or less, sort of thing. And your home fits into the character of the area because that's an old home. The new ones that are being built over the last ten years, do they fit into the character of the community?
I would say, yeah, a few of them, yeah. I don't like personally. There's been a few that have put up that, yeah, they're okay. They fit in. I mean, they're new. Anything new is going to look different from old, and anything new put into an area that you're used to, yeah, it's going to be a little different, yeah.
So your concern comes down to size in the end?
Yes, size.
Okay. In terms of amassing and...
Yes, and the thing with Dune, it's so unique because you can take five houses in a row and say, well, yeah, I can build a house this size across from them, but you move five houses down further, and that same house wouldn't fit in because the houses are of different sizes.
Right, right. I appreciate that. Are you here just representing yourself, or is there a number of people in the gallery you all together?
There's quite a few in the gallery.
How many? Show of hands, so I can get an understanding. Okay, it's all that side. All right. Appreciate that. So do you feel the proposed proposal we have here fits into the character or does not fit into the character?
The new house at ten-ninety-four, no, it definitely does not fit in.
So your recommendation is that the council refuse the application?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ionitis.
Thank you. Your, excuse me, my questions are directed towards...
Oh, you clicked in again for staff? Okay. You can wait till the end of delegations then?
If you have questions? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Those are all the questions we have for you. And the last registered delegation is Bruno Pisinnan. Did I pronounce that correctly?
No, but it's close enough.
Do you want to tell me what it is?
My name's Bruno Peachini.
Okay, Peachini, thank you.
I'm a resident of Dune Village, and I've attended two of the Heritage meetings with respect to the Upper Dune Heritage District. At both meetings, there's a significant gap between what the city staff, planners think meets the bylaws and what the Heritage Committee members meets the bylaws, as well as the local residents. Both times, the recommendation by city staff is turned down. I have a couple of questions for city staff that I haven't had answered when I've asked. One of the requirements is, in the preamble to policy nine, five-point-nine-point-two for new buildings, is it's not the intent or desire that new buildings should reproduce past styles. In this regard, new buildings should be of good contemporary design and complementary to the height, proportion, scale, and character of the district. I've asked city staff a couple of times, can you tell me what analysis you did to support that the proposed project they're doing is complementary to the proportion of the homes in the district? And I've never got an answer. I mean, the average home is under two-thousand square feet. Would a ten-thousand-square-foot home be complementary to the proportion of the homes in the district? It's a question I have for staff.
We'll get answers to your questions at the end of your presentation.
Sure. Another question is, there is eight criteria that staff have looked at, and they present them at the Heritage Committee meetings. They're the height, the form, the roof, the windows, the colors, the materials, the sitting, and the setback. With respect to the materials, the proposed application was recommended by city staff, but the materials, as outlined in the bylaws, "Materials appropriate and typical of the Heritage District shall be used with an emphasis on natural fabrics such as brick, stone, and wood." I guess my question to city staff is, how do they arrive at the conclusion that a stone-clad house meets these criteria? There's nothing natural about a stone-clad house. It's manufactured stone. It's cement. Some are just stucco. So, wouldn't mind having an answer as how that meets the materials that are used in the neighborhood. If you looked at the homes in the neighborhood, they're ninety-five percent brick, so I'm not sure how the materials are typical of the Heritage District. Those are my questions that I have for city staff.
Okay, so that's the end of your presentation, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. A few members of council who have questions. Perhaps I'll just ask Mr. Benson, so if you can reply at all to the questions raised by the delegation before we go to questions of staff.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of the proportion, what staff is looking at when we consider heritage permit applications in Upper Dune are the specific guidelines for new building construction. And as was noted, there are eight guidelines specific to height, form, roof, windows, color, materials, sighting, and setback. Probably the closest of these guidelines in relation to proportion is relative to form. And this is what it says. It says, "The visual form of new buildings shall complement the form of the historic vernacular building stock. In this regard, the form shall be varied with consideration given to one and a half-to-two-story heights, medium-pitched, steeply pitched roofs, dormer windows, and rear additions and add-ons." When, in our review of the application, the proposed new building is varied. It is a two-story building, which is consistent with the guideline. It has a medium-pitched roof, which is consistent with the guideline, and it has windows of a shape that are also consistent with the guideline. So overall, in terms of the design of the house, it was staff's opinion that it is consistent with this guideline relative to form. In regard to the materials, in terms of stone, this is what the Heritage District Guidelines say. "Materials appropriate and typical of the Heritage District shall be used with emphasis on natural fabrics such as brick, stone, and wood, as opposed to metals and plastics." The delegation is correct that the material that is proposed is a man-made stone. Over time, there are improvements in terms of the materials and technology relating to materials that are available to property owners. The manufactured stone that is available today is a high-quality material. It is very difficult to ascertain the difference between a manufactured, man-made stone, and a natural stone. Man-made stone has been approved in previous heritage permit applications that have been considered by the committee and approved by council.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Benson, so. We have a few questions for you. Counselor Ionitis, is yours still for staff or for the delegation? Okay, for the delegation, go ahead.
Thanks, Bruno, for coming in. I guess my question is regarding the whole process of what your neighborhood has gone through. How would you rate the whole process? Would you consider it...
It's frustrating. I mean, it's frustrating for the landowner. I mean, I agree, it's frustrating for everybody, but, I mean, if we want to put something in our backyard like a workshop, we go through the same process and get turned down. And I know there's people on the streets who've built homes, and when it comes to materials, I mean, stone, I'm not a chemist, but manufactured stone is cement. It's not stone, right? It's like, if we have to follow these eight criteria and the preamble to it about being the proportion of what we're building, then so should everybody. So we either all follow it or none of us follow it. But what's happening here is that there's like exceptions, like we hear that the materials were other manufactured stone. That's cement. It's like putting stucco on the property. It says here, stone, natural stone. Why aren't we sticking to the criteria? We all are held accountable. We're all held to this criteria for other renovations we want to do. And we all know that when we buy into the neighborhood. So if you buy into the neighborhood, you've got to follow these bylaws.
Okay, thanks, Bruno.
Counselor Janetski.
Thank you for coming in and making your presentation. How long have you lived in the district?
From sixteen, age sixteen to twenty-three, and then I moved back two years ago. So maybe eight years. My parents lived there for twenty-five years.
And you moved back, why did you, why did you move back?
It is a unique neighborhood. If I want to live in a subdivision, I would have lived in a subdivision of just houses side by side. This is the nicest neighborhood in town. Whenever my friends or clients drive to my house, they're like, wow, didn't know this was here. I mean, we've had people say, how do you have chickens and farm animals here? We're allowed to. There's bylaws that say you're allowed to do that in this area. So it's just, it's unique. So I love living there.
So do you think the community is changing for the better or for the worse in terms of the development coming forward?
You know what? There are houses that have been built that are new, that are on the larger side, but they fit in. They, the character, they're brick homes, they look, they have an older style to them. And then there's one house that was built four months ago. Everyone who drives by goes, why is that here? But like, doesn't fit, right? And the bylaws say, I mean, they talk about eight criteria. The preamble to the eight criteria is that new buildings should be of complementary to the height, proportion, scale, and character of the district. This new house is not complementary to anything in the neighborhood. It's, you know, it's a lovely home, but not in that neighborhood.
And which house are you referring to? Which address?
It's one-one-two-two, I think. It's the newest one there.
The house that you live right now, how old is it?
It's nineteen-sixty-seven.
Okay, and is it across the street from this or...
A couple houses down.
I'm sorry?
A couple houses down from Steve. A couple houses down from Steve, on his side of the street.
Okay.
I don't see it, like where I am, I don't see it. Just when you go down the street and you go for a walk, you see one-one-two-two, and it's disappointing.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Hi, Bruno. Thanks for your presentation. You've asked some good, solid questions. I don't really have any more questions for you because you've answered some of them through Counselor Janetski, but thanks so much for coming in.
Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Vervanevic. Bruno, Mr. Scher made an interesting comment in that he said that there could be a home that fits in at one address, but five houses down, it may not fit in. Do you find that that is the case, or is the placement of the home so unique that this really does give us a unique challenge?
You know what? In the bylaws, it talks about homes being of a modest nature. And I guess, four-thousand-six-hundred square feet, I can't see where it fits in on the street. I think it doesn't.
Okay, but just with that observation, that a house may fit in at one address, but maybe five houses down, it wouldn't...
I don't think so. Not that size of a house wouldn't fit in on the street at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bruno. That's all the questions from council. There are no other delegations. Madam Clerk, Mr. Clerk, there's no one else that additions? Okay, all right, good. In that case, I'll open up for council to ask questions of staff. Can key in. Counselor Ionitis.
Thank you, Counselor Singh. I guess the question I have is, we've heard quite a few concerns about eleven-twenty-two Dune Village Road. I just want to know, when did that get approved?
In regard to eleven-twenty-two Dune Village Road, that was a heritage permit application that was submitted in, last year, in two thousand and fourteen. It went through the normal process of applications. It's very similar to this application in that demolition of an existing building was also proposed as part of that application. The application went, the staff report recommended approval of the application. That went to Heritage Kitchener Committee. Heritage Kitchener Committee recommended approval of that application, and the application was approved by council on June sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, so it was all approved by us, then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. I don't really, I guess my one question would be really on is, you've been working with myself and with SPUD to make sure that any applications that come forward are seen through a variety of eyes. I know that there has been some frustrations, but has that been working better than bringing it to Heritage and then having to sort of backtrack?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, this is really the first test. This is the first application that has come forward since we introduced those new provisions in terms of including yourself in those meetings with the applicant. So there was good dialogue back and forth. I know that the applicant met with staff and met with yourself and other councilors to discuss changes that could be made, and there was circulation to, with SPUD, and those comments received from SPUD did relate to certain conditions that we added in our recommendation for approval.
Okay, that's great. At the appropriate time, I have a motion that I'd like to put forward if it relates to what we're talking about.
Okay, well, the motion will actually, the motion that's to come forward is the one from Heritage Kitchener, and then if that one isn't, that one can be amended or not supported, or supported, and then if there's an alternate motion, we can take it at that point in time.
Okay, I apologize. It would be in addition to the motion that has been brought forward by Heritage Kitchener. I have something in addition to add to that.
Okay, we can consider it at that time. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. And again, trying to figure some of this stuff out, the other property that was approved, eleven-twenty-two, I guess it was, do you know offhand the setback?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, from what I can recall, the setback was a hundred and twenty feet from the property line?
A hundred and twenty feet, okay. And the proposed setback for this dwelling is sixty-eight feet deeper.
Correct, a hundred and eighty-eight feet.
Hundred and eighty-eight feet. And again, this, not my area of expertise, so I hear a lot of, I've heard a lot of concern about size, and my question goes back to the setback. So when we're talking about the size of a home, do we take into consideration the apparent size? And by that, I mean, I took a look at some of the homes in, along the street, and some have very, the setback looks like it's maybe eight meters and giant, from my vantage, gigantic bungalows, for example, which would have a much larger apparent size than a two-story setback, a hundred and eighty-six feet, which is extremely deep. Does it, when we're talking about heritage landscapes, I would think that that would come into consideration. Does it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. We took a number of factors into consideration with regard to this application. First, I should say that the Heritage District Plan does not contain specific policies or guidelines with regard to square footage. There is no specific minimum or maximum square footage amount. In addition, in the zoning, there is no minimum or maximum square footage amount. What there is in terms of, the closest thing would be lot coverage, and in this case, the lot coverage in the zoning is fifty-five percent. This proposal, with a building of approximately forty-four, forty-five hundred square feet on a lot that is almost two acres, is much less than fifty-five percent in terms of lot coverage. Staff took into consideration the size of the lot, that it was almost two acres. We took into consideration the fact that there is a setback of a hundred and eighty-eight feet, and also that the land slopes down approximately six feet to the point of the hundred and eighty-eight feet. And so these were all considerations in terms of our approving, or at least recommending approval of height of a building with a height of thirty-one feet and a square footage of forty-four hundred to forty-five hundred square feet.
What is the minimum setback for this property? If they met all the other regulations?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the zoning bylaw in front of me. I can tell you that, on average, when I looked at the average of the homes around this property, the average setback was about forty feet, forty to fifty feet.
Forty feet. Okay. So to sum this up then, so supposing someone else came forward, they could build presumably a three-thousand-square-foot, let's say, home that is much, much closer to the road, and from my vantage, would have a much greater impact on the view and the cultural landscape. Is that correct? Which would cover up more of your field of vision, I guess, is what I'm sort of trying to say.
You are correct in terms of what would be permitted under the zoning bylaw. Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
You know what? I have a question of the first delegate. Can, may I... Can, may I ask him still, or is that not allowed?
Typically, we don't. Is it absolutely relevant?
Yeah, well, I feel it is.
Okay, that's fine, I'll allow it.
Thank you.
Okay, come forward, sir, please.
Sorry, Mr. Schleimer, I feel for you. You know, I understand that this is a frustrating process, but I also feel for the, that your neighbors, you know.
Sure, I feel for them too.
It's a difficult situation. My question to you is, my understanding is that up until very recently, the precise plans that we are looking at, are the plans of somebody else, not yours?
No, yeah, they're someone else's. We just wanted to see, wanted to clarify and see if it would go through, and then what we are allowed to do.
Yeah.
I wouldn't build that house.
You would, so if this were theoretically, if this were approved today, then what you're saying is, you have no intention of building that house?
I'd rather sell it. I'd rather sell it instead of, but if this keeps on going on where I can't, I can't sell the house the way it is. Like, the house that I live in right now, built in 1872, there's nothing heritage about that thing. That thing, the sloping floors, it's, it's a mess.
Well, if it's built in 1872, I imagine...
There's some houses that are older than mine, that are very nicely built. This house was, from what I heard from the neighbors, it was a chicken coop at one time, and he just kept on adding pieces on. Like, it's, there's nothing, it's just, it's a place to live.
Okay, thanks. So just to ask, then, if all you're looking into here is what would theoretically be allowed?
Yeah.
You know?
Get clarification.
To get clarification. Then, you know, based on what, whatever the outcome is of this meeting tonight, would you be, would you not be willing to come and work with Heritage Kitchener?
Sure.
To look at what are the parameters that you can share with your prospective buyers?
Sure. And if I was, if I was willing to, if I was going to build a house, which I might have to do, then sure, I want to make sure it's done right. But also, for, hopefully, there's going to be another buyer, that they would know cut and dry what they have to do instead of spending, I'm not sure what the last guy did, but he was very frustrated. He had, I think he spent three to five months, I'm not sure what it was, but he came to quite a, back and forth, and he was just put off with everything. He doesn't want to have to do, he's done with it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks a lot for coming back up.
Hold on, Councilor Galloway-Seelock has a question for you as well, sir.
Just one quick question, because I was actually going to ask for him to come back up with you. In the staff report, the first bullet point that says the application give consideration to A, reducing the maximum square footage of the new single detached dwelling to approximately 4,000 square feet, and B, using brick as the main cladding material on the front facade. Would you be willing or agree to, if we change that to, you must reduce the footprint to 4,000 square feet, and you must use brick cladding? Because, I'll just ask that, and then...
Yeah.
Because it'll give you the guidelines you're asking for, is that right?
Yeah, if I had to reduce it, that, I'd have to look at that, yeah. But the other thing with the brick cladding, like, I do landscaping and stuff like that, and what Leon was saying with the way some of this, some of the products out there are very, like, it's concrete, it's concrete, but it looks real. Like, it's hard for the average person to tell what this looks like. There has been quite a few improvements on different kinds of cladding out there. So to point that out. That's it?
Thank you.
Mr. Schleimer, I'm just going to ask one question myself, since you're up there now. So are you clear that your application right now would require you to build the kind of house that was proposed by the original applicant? And if you were to build something different, you would need to come back and go through a secondary process?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was absolutely clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Janetski, you're up next.
I was going to bring forward the motion of Heritage Kitchener at this time.
Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so go ahead.
Okay, it's moved by myself and seconded by Councilor John Gazola, that pursuant to Section 42 of the Heritage Act. And this is the minutes from the recommendation from the Heritage Committee back earlier this month, that this application, HPA 2015 V 019, be refused to permit the demolition of the existing single-family dwelling, attached garage and shed, and the construction of a new single detached dwelling and attached garage at the property, address is 1094 Dune Village Road, in accordance with the supporting information et cetera, as outlined in the staff report. And I'd like to speak to that, too.
Go ahead.
This area is very unique in Kitchener. It's probably the only unique area we have in terms of a heritage district that's got the rural type of nature to it, as opposed to Victoria Park or Civic Center, which are urban downtown cores. I've driven this area for over 40 years. I don't live in there, but I've done it many years, as being a former staff employee and sitting on Heritage Kitchener as well. And in the last several years, last 10 years, the character of the area has really changed significantly. The home that is proposed here, actually, is a beautiful home. I was quite impressed with it. It looks lovely. It's like a monster home, but it has beautiful characters to it. Unfortunately, it's in the wrong location. I mean, it should be somewhere like in Hidden Valley, or Dune South, or in another area that fits into a newer subdivision type area. And then I also got to thinking that, what happens if we take a small little house, one of these houses that are in Upper Dune right now, and then we try to put it in Hidden Valley, or Dune South areas, or wherever, into those new subdivisions? How will those residents react? Will that fit into the character of those subdivisions? Not at all. I see this proposal as being totally out of character with the Upper Dune Heritage District. Policies were designed to provide some substantial stability to the community back in 1988, and at that time, there was no pressure in terms of redevelopment, but the community wanted to have some established goals, because LACAC was just newly formed back several years ago, and the objectives of trying to preserve heritage was looked on as a way to maintain it with some regulations, policies and rules. I am supportive of development on this property, as long as it meets the character of the community. And I feel that this proposal, and some of the others that have been built, absolutely do not. So I'm prepared to support the recommendation of the Heritage Committee to refuse the application.
Thank you, Councilor Davy.
Thank you. I will not be supporting Heritage Committee's recommendation. I'll be supporting staff's original recommendation, potentially with some tweaks should this fail. There are a lot of things to consider here. First and foremost, I'm considering if I was a resident in that area, and if I'm considering the cultural heritage landscape. The reality is, the home, a home almost the same size, 75% of the size, could be built 40, 30, something like that, feet away from the road, where it's going to take up much more of your view, of the vista of the street, as you, as you drive by, as you walk by. We're talking about a home that has a footprint of 2,000 square feet. Yes, it's two stories, but there are other homes in the area that certainly must rival 2,000 square feet as a bungalow with high roofs. The other issue here is that this is the largest lot. This lot, like, looking at page 1-2 of the Heritage Kitchener's report, this lot is absolutely enormous. I mean, the setback of this home is 183 feet. That's deeper than the majority of the lots in the city of Kitchener, I would guess. This home is going to be so far back, yes, you're going to be able to tell from far away that it's a big home. But in terms of the views and the vistas, because of the setback so far, it's going to have, in my opinion, a negligible impact. Lastly, I'm, I feel for the applicant. He's been through, two people have tried to purchase this property and build homes, have been through this confusing process twice, and to date, we're telling him that he has to build a much smaller home on a two-acre property, which just intuitively, no matter what we seem to do, seems intuitively wrong. If this fails, I would, as Councilor Galloway-Seelock suggested she may bring forward, support that, yes, it'd be the brick, brick cladding at the front, yes, it'd be lessened to 4,000 square feet. But aside from that, I think, I think we're just, really, I think this is the best use of staff's time, or frankly, councilor committee's time, because this is, once our staff, our heritage staff look at it and approve it, I think that we're starting to nitpick a bit too much here.
Councilor Gazola.
I'll start off by saying that I will be supporting the recommendation that's before us, and I would really like to urge all of council to do the same. Heritage is really a tough thing to understand, and you either are interested in history and heritage, or you're not. I'm surprised by, when I look at the roots of some people on the other side of the chamber here, their take on heritage situations. Heritage is a tough thing to understand, because it's, in this day and age, you know, people say, it's my body, I can do with whatever I want with it, it's my home, I should have the right to do whatever I want. And it really is a tough thing to try to understand. On the other hand, and heritage laws are tough, and we're not unique in that they're tough. Heritage laws all over the world are extremely tough. I was flipping through here, trying, I think an excellent example of a heritage district is in San Francisco, Alamo Square, where we have, there's a row of about eight to 10 Victorian houses that have been there for years. Beautiful people, it's one of the, one of the main tourist attractions in San Francisco. And there were tough laws around that. Even Donald Trump could come in and want to try to tear one of those down and put up one of his golden mansions, and that would not be allowed. Heritage is a tough thing, and we have to, we have to stick by it. We have here, council before us, back in 1988, came up and set up a heritage district with certain rules and regulations, additional rules and regulations, that they felt, and at that time, that it was, they passed it, and that it could survive in our community. And over the years, it pretty much has. There has been some leeway in the past, and someone really brought it out tonight, when you, when you say, okay, it's so many feet, but we'll let it go over by three feet, the next time, it's another three feet. And all of a sudden, there's all sorts of new precedents is established, and what you're trying to protect goes by the by. The biggest issue here, in my mind, and when I looked at this from the beginning, is this whole idea that we've been really pushing, there was all kinds of campaigning in the last election on two things, you know, on public engagement and on the importance of neighborhoods. And this is a unique neighborhood, like it or not. It is unique. There's no other neighborhood in the region like it, and very few, I would expect, in our entire country. So, and the neighbors there, the neighbors understand what it's all about. So when someone wants to move, change things around in the neighborhood, they need to talk to their fellow neighbors. And I think there are two cases here where that didn't happen. And I think, when it all came down to it, there were three items, height, size and materials, that the neighborhood were opposed to. I know, when I first looked at the drawings of what was going to go in there, beautiful, beautiful house. The applicant said it was going to be his dream house. I could believe it, it would be a tremendous place. I'd love to have had it, with four kids, 50 years ago. But the fact of the matter is, it didn't fit. And when I first heard about it, I said, have you talked to the, have you talked to the ward council, have you talked to the neighborhood? Well, that other part of talking to the neighborhood really was not, did not take place. So I believe here, we have, we have, we have a real neighborhood, a different neighborhood, a compatible neighborhood, an active neighborhood, and they're saying, we really want things to remain the way they are, but if there is to be change, we have a lot of rules and regulations, live by the rules that have been set up, and we will go along with it. That didn't happen. So I think, quite frankly, the owner of the property has to review what those rules are. You're in, you're in a special neighborhood, a special club there, you have to live by those rules. So I would encourage council to, if you really mean it, and neighborhoods are important, you have to support this neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilor Gazola. Councilor Rethington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that I support the Dune residents. But my support goes wider than just this issue and this recommendation, which I will vote in favor of. This property is located, as we know, and is inappropriate in our very first heritage community. Now, that's a heritage area that has been legitimately in place for 27 years. We've got a Heritage Committee that's made up of several councilors and other committee members, other community members, who care deeply about heritage values and all they involve in our city. If we once again ignore the wishes of this committee, to me, it's yet another slap in the face for those committee members. It's also an indication that we have no or little respect for heritage values in this community and elsewhere in Kitchener. And if that is the case, I wonder why we even bother to have a Heritage Committee in any heritage neighborhoods. And by the way, upfront, I should declare that I'm proud to live in one of those beautiful heritage and historic neighborhoods. I'm also, up until now, I've been extremely proud to live in a city that is committed to protecting and preserving, supposedly preserving, those heritage communities. So as I said, I'll be voting in favor of the recommendation before us, and I'm totally bewildered by why, how these issues go separate ways when we look at staff and we look at the Heritage Committee.
Councilor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I see decisions like this, I can absolutely appreciate the emotions that come with it, and the passion that the neighborhood may have, and of course, the recommendations coming from the Heritage Committee. But we can't allow emotions to govern our decision-making process. It has to be a balanced approach. I understand the sense of need and requirement to preserve the special distinct character of this heritage, but one of the things that the applicant made himself is a point, that he could look at severing the lot and having two small lots of a very large pristine area, which has very distinct heritage landscaping characteristics to. And I think that would be counterproductive to what the effort of the neighborhood is, of having two smaller lots and fitting to what the neighborhood would want, or preserving a very pristine large lot that I think would still fit and conform to what the character of this neighborhood is, and then helping to preserve the long-term, the heritage preservation. I think what the applicant is trying to do is, from his comments, he's appreciative of the sense of preservation of the heritage culture, and I think whatever he would put forward as a building proposal would try to adhere to that. And that's what the gist of it got from him. But that's something that we could ourselves put as restrictions, not prohibit the change that he's proposing, but ensure that there are certain requirements, ensuring that the characteristics of the new built form meets those requirements, but aligning what he has in mind, too. One of the things I see often with heritage proposals, and sometimes the feedback that we get from the neighborhood, and as I said, there has to be kind of a balanced approach. We need to understand the requirements and the effects to the property owner, because that's important. That has to be important in our decision-making. Because at the end of the day, people put a lot of effort in their own, again, their financial... a lot of effort in their own, again, their financial being can be affected by our decision, and at the same time, of course, what the opinion of the neighborhood is. And I like to make this recommendation and advice to many of the residents here, and overwhelmingly to future applicants, and again, you know, those that care very much about the heritage preservation. Each individual property owner has a right to entrench certain rights into their property that no one else can change, restricted covenants, which means you could place into your own ownership certain requirements that no one could ever change, meaning the requirements that you would want, that would adhere in your own essence what you think the heritage character needs to be in this neighborhood. What that would do is, you would own that decision. That would have an impact on your value, but you would own that. No one else could be able to make that decision on your behalf. The city couldn't change that either. That's something I would encourage you guys to look at, again, for the long-term preservation for, again, your future generations as well. It would have a substantial financial impact, but again, if you care very strongly about that preservation of heritage culture, you have that avenue as well. So, when I see this, as a council, as a decision-making body, I have to make my decision that's balanced on all accords. So, I will not be supporting the recommendation of the heritage committee, and will be supportive of the staff recommendation.
Councillor Marsh.
Thank you. I want to just make a few comments regarding the nature of our discussion tonight. The problem here is that the guidelines for this heritage district were put in place for the very first time in our city. This was our very first heritage district, and they did a fine job for the time, but there is no way that the vagueness of the wording would stand to pass if it were to be proposed today. And so, you know, the reason that staff, from my view, the reason that staff is not looking at it the same way as the Heritage Kitchener committee members, is because their job is to look at the guidelines as objectively as possible. And it's not up to interpretation, it is up to interpretation to a degree, but they are trying to be reasonable and fair. I thought that when this came forward almost a year ago to council, that we directed staff to do what they can to clarify the wording of the bylaw and to ensure that the original intention of the wording is clarified. And so if we didn't do that, I would like to see that happen, so that we're not back here again in another six months to a year. I am prepared to support the motion on the floor, because I feel that we are looking at a theoretical exercise here. And I am considering the property owner, I'm considering the future property owner of this property, if it were to pass, if this were to be approved, this development and the building sold. That poor property owner who's got all of their neighbors thinking they've got the McMansion and that it's terrible, I mean, that poor person, that poor family, you would not want to be there. But I have also a call to action here for the members of SPUD. And, you know, we have a process in place with our Heritage Kitchener Committee, and it's a once-a-month commitment. You don't, you know, this is something that if you're passionate about heritage, you should be on this committee. We have a vacant spot that for some reason, nobody is willing to come forward. Get involved. You know, it's fun, actually. You might actually find it enjoyable, and you might actually learn a lot, and then come to the meetings with more perspective than you would have otherwise. So, also, when you have new neighbors come, like the gentleman who spoke earlier, who didn't know about, who wasn't a member of SPUD, why not invite all the neighbors to be a member, and so that you can be a stronger community and more inclusive together? So, that's why I'm supporting the motion, because we're talking about a theoretical property, this is not necessarily even going to be built.
Councillor Ionidas.
Thank you, Mayor Rehmanovick. I'm having a little difficulty with this proposition, because, you know, 1122, Dune Village Road, went through this process, and it was, it went through heritage committee, and it passed through a heritage committee, which probably was sat by some members of council. And so I'm a little confused as to now why this property now is different. So, that to me is rather, I'm perplexed actually about that. So, it went through all the same processes as 1122 did, and...
Ladies and gentlemen, please, you had your chance. Go ahead, Councillor Ionidas.
You know, I bet if we looked at the minutes, it was probably supported unanimously, well, almost unanimously, probably, I was probably the only one who opposed it. So, again, I'm just really perplexed that where's this switch of allegiance is all of a sudden appearing? And, you know, last, a couple of weeks ago, when there was residents in this chamber about not wanting to have, you know, bicycle lanes, and the bicycle advocates were considered lobbyists. Well, how come you're not considered lobbyists for heritage? So, I don't think you are, but, you know, why are the rules changed? So, and, you know, I think Leon's done, you know, has been praised for his work over and over and over, and his staff, and the rest of the staff, and did they all of a sudden get amnesia on this one? I won't be supporting Heritage Kitchener's recommendation, I'll be supporting staff's recommendation.
Councillor Fernandez.
Kind of hard to follow some of the previous comments. When I looked back at the minutes regarding 1122, there was only Councillor Etherington who was sitting on that heritage committee at the time. I'm not exactly sure what happened. I don't believe there was quorum at that meeting. I'm not positive. I think that there was supposed to be twelve or thirteen members on that committee, and I believe there was only five, maybe six. Somehow, that slipped through. But nevertheless, we are here talking about 1094, and that's where our focus needs to be. Just because something transpired, something happened, does not mean we need to continue going down that road. Dune Village Road is a unique heritage district that was set aside in 1988, one of our first. Whether you buy in a heritage district in downtown or in the St. Mary's area, you need to be aware that you are buying in a heritage district. If you grew up in the heritage district, you know what you have, and you know you want to preserve it. It's so challenging to know that our heritage committee has time and time and time again made recommendations to preserve parts of our city, and we as a council have turned them down. And so no wonders, to Councillor Marsh's point, there are members of the community who are reluctant to sit on heritage committee, because sometimes they feel that it doesn't make a difference. Now, I appreciate her call to action, and I certainly hope that somebody from the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District steps up and joins the heritage committee. If not, I am more than happy to continue in my role as your ward councillor and representative, and speak with SPUD. But our bylaws have been written for conservation districts, have been done in order to recognize the preservation, especially because the pressure to change is constant and consistent. And if we don't have those bylaws in place, we will slowly eat away at the heritage of our community. I just came back from Ireland, and I have to say, what a thrill it was to go from one small community to another, and even into Dublin, and see heritage buildings that were probably in a lot worse shape than Mr. Schlemner's. And they're still standing, they're hundreds of years old. Somebody had the foresight to protect those properties, and maybe they're not beautiful, and maybe they're not wonderful, but somebody had the foresight. And that was the foresight that the previous council had in 1988 to set aside the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District. If we don't uphold what heritage committee stated, then we're again saying that your time and your energy is not valued. I know that there are some who don't support and understand the heritage preservation, but if generations before us have seen the importance of preserving, then we need to continue recognizing that. You know, we heard tonight that Mr. Schlemner has had, you know, two buyers that were interested, and it fell through. How many times have people sold houses and buyers have fallen through? I understand there's different circumstances, but it happens, and that's a reality. So as the ward councillor for this area, I strongly want to preserve the uniqueness of the Upper Dune Heritage Conservation District, and I ask council to do that as well, by supporting heritage committee's recommendation to refuse this application and the demolition on that site.
Okay. And there are no other comments? I'll make my comments. This is without a doubt a difficult one, because we're trying to find a balance between trying to make sure that someone who owns a particular property has an opportunity to redevelop that property in a way that's consistent with what staff believe is an interpretation of the bylaws that exist today. And we also have some strong views from the surrounding neighborhood in terms of what they feel is appropriate and isn't appropriate, both in terms of this application, and as we heard throughout the course of this evening, how they feel about some other applications that have been approved in the past. Tonight, though, we're talking about this particular application, and I think in this particular instance, we need to consider the work and the efforts of the Heritage Kitchener Committee. Having said that, my concern for Mr. Schleimer is, he needs to have some guidance, some direction around what will potentially be considered. And this is where the bylaw, as it presently exists, doesn't provide clarity either for him, and maybe that in fact is the case, you know, in other parts of the city as well. I mean, it shouldn't be that someone, you know, comes through the process on two separate occasions and struggles in order to get the clarity that they need to be able to move forward with the property. But I think when we think of the fact that, I mean, we have a heritage committee, they try to do a good job, when we consider the fact, for example, and we just did our lemonade stand throughout a variety of neighborhood events over the summer, and we heard three things in terms of parts of your neighborhood that are most important to you. Twenty-nine percent said transportation network, twenty-five percent said natural resources, and the third most popular thing was eleven percent with heritage resources. Clearly, heritage is something that continues to be important to the residents of our community. So as I said, in this particular instance, I will be supporting the Heritage Kitchener application that's before us. But going forward, I do think we need to come up with a way of providing easier clarity for applicants like Mr. Schleimer, so that they can move forward in a reasonable manner. So, recorded vote has been called? All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. So, to the residents, you see that the council did support the recommendation of the heritage committee. To Mr. Schleimer, I would suggest, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity for you to have some further dialogue with our staff to get the kind of clarity that you're hoping for, so that you can decide how to proceed with respect to this property. Councillor Galloway, Seelak.
Well, I think at this point, we need to give direction to staff to do something different, because here's the dilemma. Staff gave their opinion and outlined what they thought was something that could move forward in this district, and Heritage Kitchener didn't. And so there needs to be something that needs to happen, because I don't think at this point that staff can give the direction to the resident, because there's not clarity between what staff's opinion is and what Heritage Kitchener is going to approve. So that is the dilemma we're dealing with. So I think there needs to be some sort of direction given to staff to review the bylaw and make it much more black and white than it is currently, and bring that forward, because until that happens, residents in the area who are looking to redevelop aren't going to be able to do so, because there'll be a difference between the staff and the Heritage Kitchener always moving forward. So I think there, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think something needs to come out of today to move us forward, so we're not in this situation again in a few months' time, like Councillor Marsh said earlier.
Before I go to additional members of council, Mr. Benson, do you have any thoughts or ideas where, you're a well-regarded expert in this field, can you help us at all with this one?
The, I think comments were made earlier about this being the first heritage conservation district, and that the way in which the policies and guidelines are worded are rather broad. And that is very true, and that is the way staff have been working with these guidelines. The difficulty is, there is really no provision under the Ontario Heritage Act to amend or update a heritage conservation district. It's established by bylaw. So either you abandon the heritage district and start fresh and try to establish a new heritage conservation district, or you keep what you have, and then you look for other tools and other mechanisms and other things that you can add on to provide that greater clarity. So for example, if square footage and height are issues that are significant, then are there things that the city can do through the zoning bylaw, perhaps, to add special regulations regarding maximum height? And so the city is, at some point, they will, we will be doing a comprehensive planning review in Upper Dune, looking at zoning, looking at land use, looking at urban design issues, residential infill, and transportation. That comprehensive planning review is scheduled post-2018, 2019, because there are other communities that have been identified as a higher priority, such as Hidden Valley and Lower Dune. So something, we will be taking a look at this area, but the dilemma is, there's nothing in the immediate term, other than continuing to work with applicants, continuing to work and engage with SPUD, and hoping to find a proposal that meets with everyone's expectations.
Can I just propose then something after hearing from staff from that?
Go ahead, Councillor Galloway.
Just that my direction to staff, obviously that would need council approval, is to bring back a report with various options that can move a solution forward sooner than the 2018, 2019 timeframe. And I'm talking options, not a solution, but options that we can look at that can assist residents before that overall comprehensive review comes. I don't know, again, what that looks like, but Leon's outlined a few things that, you know, we may be able to get, or if there's other guidelines that we can put in place that may not be bylaw in the interim, until we can do that comprehensive review, so that there's a little bit more clarity on this moving forward. That would be my suggestion. So just to bring back a staff report in the shorter term outlining options to try and clarify some of the... options to try and clarify some of this before the 2018, 2019 timeline.
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That certainly, if council wishes us to report back, we can do that. I think I want to remind folks that this is the group of staff who have a heavy workload already. They have parts, they have Lower Dune, they've got the comprehensive zoning bylaw review. So this is a team that already has a heavy workload. I'd be interested in Mr. Bensasson's comments on this, but I think what really is needed here is a property-specific solution. And so my suggestion would be that the ward councillor, heritage planning staff, the property owner, somebody from Heritage Kitchener or SPUD, Mr. Bensasson, it'd be best to tell us which one, sit down and come up with what are guidelines we can all agree upon for this specific property.
That may be an option, too. I just wondered if that might be an option that can come back in that report, as well as maybe just the information regarding if there is no current staff resources, what a cost of outside assistance would be, just so that we can look at it as a comprehensive piece, and even that site-specific solution as well. That would be my proposal, if council's amenable to it.
Councillor, I'll come back to you. Councillor Fernandez. Folks, I'm cognizant that we still have a lot to get done tonight, and it's almost 9:30, so let's keep things tight, please. Councillor Fernandez.
I was really only going to reiterate what Mr. May was saying and what Mr. Bensasson had said. My concern is that if we start working on amendments to the plan, that we run the risk of going to an OMB hearing, and I see Mr. May nodding, that we have to be very careful that we don't play around with something that would cause that to happen. The work that has been happening between myself, SPUD, and Heritage Kitchener and staff, although a little bit convoluted, it's, we're getting better at it, and I think if we at least, that was sort of what I was going to suggest, that we continue working on that until we have an opportunity, when heritage staff and planning staff and Mr. May see the opportunity to move forward on a further in-depth report, I think that I don't want to see us doing anything of that nature right this minute.
Councillor Davy.
Sir, I'll be quick. I just need some clarification, speaking on Mr. Schleimer's behalf. Very quickly, whoever you want to blame in this situation, council, Heritage Kitchener, whoever, we're all part of the problem. Unfortunately, we also have a resident who is carrying two properties at the same time. So if we are looking at a site-specific solution, I think it's incumbent upon us, having been through this process twice now, to set some kind of timeframe on when the resident will have an idea of what the parameters are for his property, would it be possible to get an estimate?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bensasson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say, if you could please go to Mr. Bensasson to make sure that what I've just proposed is actually doable, and then also get some input in terms of the timeline.
Leon.
In terms of preparing a report with options, including site-specific solution, I can only say that we will do our best to do that within a couple of months' time.
Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understood the answer.
He said he could do a report within a couple of months' time.
Dealing with what Mr. May has said?
Well, dealing with the idea of having some options, including specifics around a property-specific solution.
Yeah, I'm, I think, as Mr. May has indicated, that in this situation, it could be worked out. I think staff have an awful lot of things on their plate, and I don't think, I ought to make a quick decision tonight to give them more work. Looking at it and the approach that Mr. May is taking, I think that will work. It's a matter of involving the applicant and involving the neighborhood. But to get into this revamp, which is already planned in our plans, I don't think that's the decision for tonight.
Councillor Galloway, Seelak, I said I'd come back to you.
I just think there needs to be answers, and unfortunately, there's a, I appreciated where everyone came from tonight, but there's also a resident who has a property that he wants to do something with, and right now, he can't sell it. And so we need to come up with an answer to assist him to move forward. And if you think that in a couple of months' time, you can sit down with the resident and staff, and Heritage Kitchener, ward councillor, SPUD, whoever, can come to some sort of agreement to assist this resident in order to move forward and to maintain the heritage of the Dune Village Road and the Heritage District, sorry, then I ask you to proceed with that. I don't want to give anybody more work. It just, I want there to be answers for a resident of Kitchener who needs answers and has already been down this road two to three times. So that's all I was looking for, a solution. So if there's those commitments, then I guess there doesn't need to be any direction given.
Okay, so the direction would be, though, that this would come back within a couple of months' time, so I'd say, let's shoot for the first meeting in January? Is that doable, Mr. Bensasson? Well, be frank if it's not. Oh, sorry, you're not on.
There are a number of initiatives that staff are, heritage staff, are directly involved in, including planning around rapid transit station areas, the best practices, and the cultural heritage landscape phase two. Those are all major projects and major priorities in our work program. If I may suggest, in terms of moving forward, because I still think, even with the staff report, some of the suggestions are only as good as you can implement them through policy or regulation or bylaw of some sort, and that seems to be limited. If I might suggest that we continue to work closely with the property owner and with the neighborhood, and have more direct engagement with SPUD, to try to come up with something that everyone can agree with in terms of moving forward, so that there's clear direction for the next proposal that comes forward for this property. And I think that might be the best solution in the short term.
And so that's something we could strive for within the next two-month timeframe?
Yes, but in terms of having, you know, a specific policy or regulation or change, I think that is the difficulty. I think what we might do is continue with the engagement and report back on the progress that has been made, and the discussions that we've had, and the degree to which everyone can agree with how we should be moving forward with new proposals that come forward for this property.
Mr. May.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I would suggest that council does not need to put a timeline on this. We have heard loud and clear, certainly understand the comments of Councillor Galloway-Seelak, that we have a property owner here who wants some certainty, and so we'll treat this with a matter of urgency and see how quickly we can move it forward. Who knows? We may not need to come back to council. We don't know what the solutions are going to be. So I think you can trust the ward councillor and staff to take this back and work on this and come to a solution.
Councillor Ionidas.
That's what I wanted to hear, that assurance, because it's starting to get ugly.
Thank you. So that's the direction that we have, then. Mr. Schleimer, Mr. Bensasson will be in touch with you, and hopefully we'll come up with a solution that works for you, because we understand your set of circumstances as well. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming in this evening. Let's move on, then, to item B, and we have three delegations register to speak with respect to item 8A, unfinished business. Mr. Taigie, did you want to introduce this item, as it's a piece of unfinished business coming out of your section? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up item that came out earlier this year with the request that staff prepare a report with respect to, I guess, two aspects. One is the, is there a service level change that the city should look at in terms of clearing of the sidewalks? And the second aspect was with respect to the bylaw enforcement itself and the practices therein. With respect to the first part, we looked at various options, but given some of the challenges we have with respect to the staffing and operations, we have not been able to conclude the, all the aspects that we need to look at before we go for a public consultation on this item. But we do have, and as part of the request from the council, we do have copies of the reports on this item that were prepared back in, I think, 2011, and also in 2007, 2008.
Okay, thank you. We have three delegations. The first one is Joan Leaning. Good evening, Ms. Leaning, and thank you for your patience while we dealt with the previous item. Oh, just one sec.
I was right at the beginning. I've never been to council before, so I'm not sure about your particular procedures. So bear with me, I'll try to fill you in. This winter, I had some trouble with respect to clearing my walk, which I thought I had done properly. And the last I had heard, it was two and a half inches of snow that you could accumulate on the walk. And so I did that with my snow blower, which is what I use. And then, after some of the winter was over, I got a notice saying that my walk needed to be cleared, in essence, immediately, or I'd be fined and clobbered on the head. So I said, what, what? And not understanding it, I thought, oh, well, that must be a mistake, you know, they can't be right. But then, two days later, I got another notice, and I said, what? So I phoned a couple of the people that were listed to call for direction. They were very nice, and they forwarded me on, and they got me to other people, and finally to Zegi, Zaduski? Anyhow, he was great. And he came down and looked at my walk that was cleared with my snow blower. And the way I do it is to take the snow blower, go down the middle, up the right side, or the, yeah, the right side, and then down the other right side. So it has three sweeps. Then I take my shovel, and where the tire tracks are, and clean those off. So it's one-half inch packed, level snow. I didn't think there was anything wrong with that, but apparently there was. So what happened was, by chance, I had a fellow that worked with me and who jumped ship. He's supposed to be here tonight. He has a movie for you to show you what was going on. He had worked, just to give you a wee bit of background for him, he worked for the Greater Toronto Airport. And his job was to look at the runways and propose what he thought should be done to keep them clear and operable in the best manner. He walked those runways himself daily. And so there was a council that listened to proposals by various people, and quite well-established people. And this gentleman's name that I'm referring to that walks here, his name is George Hill, and he is also firefighter, part-time firefighter for us. And he did a very good job, because what, but what he went for, and I don't have a computer, so he's a computer guy. What he went for was proving to you people that they're your walks, clean them. And I'm saying, hmm, that's not really the way I like to do things. So he was looking into the law and all this sort of thing. And I provide a copy of each of his very visual presentation for you on a flash drive. And I also, not having a computer at my disposal at this time, hired a typist to type my, I'm more verbal, I'm French, I talk with my hands. But, so I put that in, too, and my experience in terms of interpretation of law, because it all settled on Mr. Turner's interpretation of what the clearing of the snow should be, right down to the bare concrete. And it didn't seem to me that that would be fair or reasonable. In any event, I am now aware that you are, you do own the walks, but I'm not sure I think that it's fair to just say, well, okay, you clean them. There's a lot of things going on. There's the transit, there's the this, there's the that, there's a lot of money, a lot of things to consider. My background comes from law, 18 years in the courts, Supreme County Deputy Local Register, and 15 years in the hospital in the merge and admitting, and I know how dangerous those sidewalks can be if they are cleared down to the concrete. I tried to get some more information about that and from my mail carrier, and you'll get a copy of this, my proposal, but it turned out, the summer before all the thing went down with the snow, my mailman, who's very nice, was kind of drooping a little, it was really, really, really hot out, and I was mowing the lawn, and I said, gee, you know, I'm going in for a cool drink, would you like to come in and have one? Oh, yes, yes, I love one, okay. I said, step in the laundry room here, and I got us a cool drink. But I had, you know, the snow thing wasn't even in view. It's curious, I love the meeting here, boy, this is great. I love, it's interesting, to say the very least. So he came in, and I said, how long have you been a mail carrier? And he said, 17 years. I said, how far would you walk in a day? And he says, 19 miles, give or take a little. I thought, gee, I'm lucky if I walked that much in a year, the way I feel these days. But anyhow, all that aside.
Mrs. Leaning, if I can ask you to start wrapping up, please?
I'm sorry?
If I can ask you to start wrapping up, please?
Yeah, okay.
Because your five minutes is up.
Okay. So I said, my calculations show he has walked 76,000, I think 76,000 miles over the course of his 17 years. So he's a pretty good estimator. Then I got my mailman, in this winter, several people, but the one that was coming around this winter, my walks were cleaned with the half-inch snow. I said, how do you like to keep my walks? And he said, oh, fine, fine. And I said, really? Could you explain that? And he said, well, yeah, there's nothing wrong with them. And I said, what if they were cleaned down to the bare concrete? And he said, no, no, no. And I said, would you explain that? And he looked, and he said, well, well, there'd be no traction, he said, and you couldn't see anything. I said, what do you mean by not see anything? And he said, and he was kind of looking for words, and I said, do you mean like black ice? Yes, yes, that's it. Okay, so there's one mailman, there's a second mailman.
Mrs. Leaning, if you can wrap up, please.
Okay.
Okay, because we're...
Well, I waited, so, you know, give me just half a sec.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know. I do know what you're thinking, I think. Anyhow, I got a complimentary call from MTD, who make snow blowers, and they said, we will come over and help you adjust your skid so you can get down to the bare concrete. That won't work, because no snow blower gets down to the bare concrete, not even paddles, the rubber paddles, they just don't, and that can be confirmed by Schlifter's and any number of things. In terms of safety, when you have black ice, working 15 years in the hospital, I know what can happen. Concrete is very hard, and it's even harder frozen. It's not like a gymnasium inside where you have wooden floors, and when you slip, there's momentum added to that. So at worst, you could have some child, or mother, or whomever, slipping on that, hitting their head, having a concussion, or at worst, a skull fracture and dying. That's not safe. It's simply not safe.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Leaning. And we have several members of council that want to ask you questions.
Oh, sure.
Councillor Singh.
Thank you. Hi, John, thanks for being here. So the two questions that are before us, and I agree with some of the comments that you made with the ambiguity of...
You're going to have to speak up a bit.
Thank you. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, perfect. No, I said, I understand some of the comments that you're making with the ambiguity of the policy for snow clearing and the current bylaw, and I think a review is in order for the bylaw at least. But the other question that we have before us is, of course, the review, the comprehensive review and public consultation that staff are going to be taking, perhaps into the 2016 year now, about snow clearing done by the city. So those two questions are very different from each other. Are you a proponent of the city taking charge in snow clearing its sidewalks?
I'm still going to have to, can I come a little closer?
I'll just shout a little louder. Are you a proponent of the city clearing... Are you, are you a proponent of the city clearing the sidewalks on behalf of homeowners?
Okay, ma'am, if you can speak at the microphone, please? Sorry.
Please? I, I think there's better solutions than that.
Okay.
I really do.
You summarized it well, thank you.
The best one is, let us use our snow blowers the way we did before, and, and we'd be happy to do that. Many people think, well, I think it's safer with the, with the snow pack on top, just as the mailman said, it gives you more traction.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Galloway-Cilhau.
Yeah. First of all, I just want to thank you for this document. You'd put a lot of work into it.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Yes.
There's my lady there, she promised you it all, yeah, she always lives up to her word.
We got them, and I read every word, and I thought it was very well done. So I just wanted to thank you for that. I have one question for you. I understand where you're, where you're coming from and what you've said. Are you okay if we look at this through our review that would come back sometime in 2016?
As lo, yes, but from a personal, I would, of you, I would love to be able to use my snow blower this winter.
Right. And so there could be some direction given to that effect.
But I think, yeah, I think that that is what should happen. Two things, what, two very short things that I didn't mention here, but is in there, is that some cities who were doing the, what do you call, enforcement method, Dearborn in Pennsylvania had to stop giving tickets, because they asked their staff, you, to come out and help them clear their snow. Apparently, the announcer said, "That didn't go over very well." Woodstock now, in Kitchener, also is taking the good friendship approach rather than enforcement, because they couldn't clear their streets, i.e. your streets, in less than three weeks. So they're getting a lot of flack, too, so they're not paying fines either. I don't know by whose authority, but probably by a bylaw or something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Etherington.
Mrs. Leaning, you do a great job clearing your sidewalk. I wanted to ask if you'd come and clear my sidewalk.
Listen, if you can provide this kind of entertainment to me every week, I'll come and clear it free. For, for what, five years? Is that good?
Seriously, though?
I am serious, this is, I haven't had that much interest in something since way back when I worked at the courthouse, and there were judges, and divorces, and who knows, oh, murders, battles.
Well, you know, every couple Mondays, you can come and spend it with us, and you can even sit it up there with our friends from the media, I'm sure they'd enjoy the company.
Mrs. Leaning?
Yes.
To have a citywide snow clearing program, I believe, would cost five or six million dollars. You would not support that. I wanted to ask you, for your fellow seniors in the community, I've, I've had a lot of complaints about property taxes. Do you think those seniors would be opposed to a citywide snow clearance program?
Hmm, that depends on the variables that are attached to it, a lot of tentacles, you know, I read that in the, in the letter that this young lady sent me, the thing, about one, $40, if they did that sort of the citywide clearance thing, 40 bucks a month or something. I, I don't know, it depends on the senior. Some of them are well-off, some of them are not well-off. I think there would be a variety until you assessed people on a wider level. I wouldn't want to just jump up and down and say, "Oh, yeah, they'll be happy," because I don't know that, but I'd be happy to go and canvass them.
I'm sure you would. Well, I'm glad you're having fun here tonight.
Well, you're great, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Yannetsky.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for coming in, Joan. I know we've talked on several occasions, as you're one of my constituents, and when you got that notice in the mail, I went out to talk to you about your property, and, and you had done your job. It wasn't perfect, but it was walkable, which was still satisfactory, and it was as a result of people somewhere down the street that caused the problem, you getting notified as well, because they didn't do their job. Anyways, so this, this post, this review will be coming back again, and so we'll be in touch with you again, and I'll be in contact with you as well, just to keep you up to date to whether we do it, or whether the city will look at an overall policy sometime in the future. So we'll be in touch.
Okay, great.
Okay, that would be all the questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Our next delegation is Gary McGaffin. Welcome, Mr. McGaffin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your worship and members of council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to underscore an issue that I and many other seniors have, when the city mandates its residents to clear their sidewalks of snow and ice. Immediately following the harsh winter of 2013, 14, I spent several months speaking with officials and residents from at least nine major Ontario municipalities that clear their residential sidewalks. It should be noted, scheduled dates to present my information to council on this issue were postponed quite often. That said, here are their sidewalks' snow removal costs as a percentage of their operating budgets. Owen Sound, 3.07% of its operating budget. Peterborough, Oakville, Richmond Hill, all less than 0.5% of their overall operating budget. The city of Mississauga clears both roads and priority sidewalks at 3.27%. Other Canadian cities, including Winnipeg, Ottawa, Montreal, Quebec City, Fredericton, and the majority of Metro Toronto, manage to keep sidewalks clear as part of their responsibilities. Some of the larger municipalities that don't clear all sidewalks have programs that provide it for seniors. Toronto and Oshawa provide free snow clearing assistance to residents over the age of 65, and to those with disabilities under the age of 65. The city of Brampton offers financial assistance to the handicapped, but they told me they're considering clearing all their sidewalks, because it would be cheaper than paying for slip-and-falls claims. These municipalities provide seniors and the handicapped with application form samples of which I have here. For what it's worth, several officials expressed surprise to me why Kitchener doesn't already clear their sidewalks for its taxpayers. The danger of the need to walk on the road is, and of itself, one good reason. Canada Post is eliminating home delivery, requiring the need to go to community mailboxes. I live on a corner with a community mailbox, postal box, 185 feet at the end of my property line. As a soon-to-be 79-year-old with mobility challenges, the city says it's my responsibility to clear that sidewalk, and our demographic is increasing rapidly. Two years ago, I suggested to my Ward 7 councillor that he pursue this issue to see if it was viable, without delay. His immediate reply was, "We can't afford it. Without any study or research, how can you purport? There are no funds." Financial resources can always be found if you're dedicated to your constituents and willing to probe for a solution. Taxpayers have questioned a $600,000 washroom in Victoria Park, Kitchener's farmer's market, the new indoor garage, and the centre and the square are all supported financially by the city. Taxpayer funds were found to underwrite the cost of the municipal concert held in the summer of 2014, and support arts sustainability. Don't misunderstand, I'm not advocating disposing of these cultural attractions, but they are perfect examples of how the necessary funding can be available. As you know, several million dollars were available to fix the Margaret Street Bridge. This past winter, the city's bylaw enforcement program was under fire, as thousands of sidewalk snow complaints swamped the operations crew to investigate and fix. This needless, time-consuming burden of manpower and enormous cost to the taxpayer would have vanished if Kitchener had instituted sidewalk snow clearing. In the past, some councillors believed they should spend time and travel to increase job opportunities. That's the responsibility of the federal and provincial governments, not municipal politicians. Your mandate is roads, sidewalks, refuse collection, et cetera. In 2000, the Ontario Court of Appeals decision stated, "Snow and ice accumulating on public sidewalks are the legal responsibility of the municipality, not the property owner." And this holds regardless of bylaws or fines, as the city owns the sidewalk and is ultimately responsible for keeping it clear. Mr. Mayor, you stated during your campaign, "The one thing that makes this a great city is our neighborhoods," and I quote, "We must work together with council, and we must do this by working with our citizens, engaging them in key decisions, harnessing their energy and passion, and listening to them as we build the Kitchener our citizens want and deserve." It's unconscionable that the snow report has taken a disgraceful amount of time to be discussed, and now we're going to learn that it's delayed until next year. What issues are you faced with that takes presidents over this serious issue? You must not wait, you must act now and implement snow clearing for your taxpayers. This attitude toward the city's sidewalks says a lot about your political commitment and public concern. Nearly every Canadian city has recently made some sort of pledge in support of active transportation or becoming pedestrian-friendly. A city that refuses to clean its own sidewalks makes a mockery of such commitment.
Mr. McGaffin, if you can-
As members of council, your future plans for the city of Kitchener must not be looked upon as parochial, but must be aggressive in the envy of other communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. McGaffin. Are there any questions? Counselor Gazola.
I don't have any questions of Mr. McGaffin, I just would like you to make a comment at some point.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Thank you, Mr. McGaffin, for coming in-
Thank you.
...this evening. Okay, questions of staff? Counselor Marsh.
Well, I, based on the, what we've heard from residents here tonight, and, and also based on what we all heard multiple times throughout, maybe not all, but most of us heard from residents throughout the snow season last winter, I, I have to say, I was also disappointed that we are not seeing the snow clearing bylaw fully reviewed at this point, but we, we absolutely have to take our time to, to do a full consult, public consultation, and make sure that we get it right, so that we understand not just what one or two residents want, but what the majority want. So I suggest that we direct staff, I would like to direct staff with the agreement of council to explore how we might tweak the current bylaw, so that we can understand how we could maybe implement our sidewalk winter maintenance bylaw more effectively for this winter, and then await the, the more fulsome consultation when it comes.
Okay, I'll come back to you then. Counselor Davey.
Thank you. It's, this is really, I guess, two, there's two separate issues, as I see it. One is the issue of bylaw and the control, and how we, how we treat people that are clearing their own sidewalks, and there's the other issue of sidewalk snow clearing, so on, by the city. On that specific point, I first wanted to ask, because this is already requested, is it even possible, this might be a question for the clerk, is it even possible if council were to, were inclined to remove staff exploring the sidewalk snow clearing? Are we permitted to do that at this stage?
Through Mayor Vanneck, as the motion has come forward and has been brought back onto the table, yes, it can be amended, let's say?
Clarification on that, because I would question that, quite frankly. I mean, this is direction that was voted on by this council during this term of council, and unless my knowledge of Robert's Rules isn't accurate, it would require a motion to reconsider that direction. The direction was that that item come back for today, it's not ready, but that doesn't change the, the base direction that, that came forward. I think the only thing that we could potentially deal with tonight would be my position is, staff have said the overall report isn't ready, if they want to, if council is inclined, as I think we heard Counsel Marsh say, is there some stuff you can bring back yet this year, and some later on, that we could potentially deal with that? Mr. Clerk?
Through Mayor Vanneck, that's, was my intent, by, by amendments could be made to, to the motion on the floor. The operative clause said it was to come back prior to winter 2015, 2016. If there are, there can be amendments to it, is to add in or to tweak the wording to say, add the additional clauses proposed by Counsel Marsh.
Okay. I'll put that on hold for a second. Question of staff, then, is there significant amount of cost in specifically reviewing the city maintenance of sidewalks between now and when this report comes back?
Mr. Taggy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. A great deal of work has already been completed by the staff in terms of trying to get to at least some components of what the final report may look like. The, the amount of work that is still remains to be completed is largely in the area of public consultation, and also in designing and looking at various options as to if we go to full clearing of sidewalks by the city, what may be some of the options for financing that type of operation.
Okay. In, in the consultation, is, is it, it's still, sorry, I wasn't clear, is the consultation been, has that already happened, or is that going to happen?
The consultation is going to happen.
Reading, looking at the report that we have here, I'm, anecdotally, I've heard quite a few concerns about other municipalities that actually do have their sidewalks cleared. The level of the service, in the reported details, you know, sometimes it's 72 hours, it doesn't start until there's eight centimeters of, of snow, et cetera. Will that, will that be part of the consultation? Because my concern is, people will just think they're going to get up in the morning, and their sidewalks are going to be totally cleared as soon as they're ready to go to work. So will, will the actual level of service be part of the consultation?
The, the short answer is yes, and also, as part of the consultation, we'll be talking to various municipalities and the level of service that they do have.
Okay. And one more question of the clerk, if I could. As Ms. Leaning indicated too, this might be an issue that, I think, potentially because of the huge cost associated, that I think perhaps we should look at in terms of possibly a political mandate the next election, a referendum. Could I get an idea, just before I even consider that idea, what the approximate, is there a significant extra cost in adding a question of that sort to, to an election ballot?
Through Mayor Vanneck, I wouldn't, I don't have those figures today, but I would be able to provide that to council.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a comment as well. Mayor Zer.
Thank you, Matt Verbanovic. Counselor Singh.
Yeah. Thank you. I think we need to be cautious when we talk about referendums, because we're going to add a sign, relatively a cost to that as well, and that's where my issue lies, and my question of staff would be, a lot of work has already gone into place, probably an exercise that will not go anywhere, but anyways, with extensive work that has already been put in place for review of the city mandate for snow clearing of sidewalks, and we already have a report dating back in 2008 and '07, which seems to be extensive document on its own, with cost allocations as well, can't we just update that report with inflationary costs, knowing what the bare minimum would, would cost the city, based on the numbers that are already outlined in previous reports?
I, I, through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I can report that in terms of the costing part, that part of the report has largely been completed. So we do have those numbers as to what the cost may look like. The, the, the part that we have not completed is to go to different service levels. So obviously, cost will change depending upon the service level that council will finally decide upon.
Right. And I understand the intent of the original motion was to have a comprehensive public review on this mandate, and any change to that would be contrary to the, the initial emotion, but I think council intuitively have, has given direction to staff, especially for budget planning as well, to ensure that our future budgets come in line to inflation. Something like, a mandate such as this would not be able to accomplish that kind of a direction as well. Am I incorrect in that assertion? Am I incorrect in that assertion? Because based on the numbers in 2007, we'd be looking at a base of at least over 3% one time, or operational increase as well as capital costs as well.
Mr. Chapman.
I think, and I have said this a number of times to council before, that the rate of inflation didn't always reflect the cost, especially when we're talking about cost of services. So we can't really directly use the 2007 report or 2011 report and just apply a factor to come to the cost. But as I said, we have done some calculations, and we do have the numbers approximately, but beyond that, there's still a lot of work that remains to be done.
Mr. Chapman, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, and the question was, I think, more for Mr. Chapman. Thank you.
Through you, your worship. You'll recall, the two-thirds of citizens in a statistically relevant survey said that their preference is to maintain current service levels at the rate of inflation. As you've noted, this would equate, based on the previous report, to approximately a 4% tax rate increase and a significant service level expansion. So I would suggest that, you know, that is not consistent with the preponderance of public feedback based on previous surveys, as indicated would require direction through public consultation or politically by council.
Yeah, and that was a form of public consultation as well, and we have a clear mandate by our citizens who have given their will as to what their preferred rate, preferred choice of rate paying ability is. I'll make more comments later.
Counselor Eddington.
Through you, Mr. Chair, a couple of questions for staff. Could you clarify for me the total cost per year to clear all the sidewalks and purchase the necessary equipment? According to my math, and I'm not good at math, it's about $6 million bucks. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I really can't comment on a report that was prepared in 2011, because as I said, those numbers were maybe true at that time. All I can say is that when we look at the costing, we are looking at two components. One obviously will be the capital cost, and the other one will be the operating cost. And also, we are looking at cost for households in terms of if we were to implement some sort of snow clearing for the residents, what that cost may look like.
So it's $6 million in the reports we have here, and those figures are out of date now. Is that correct? It would be at least $6 million. Sorry to push you on that, Dev, but that's what's in these reports.
I think, Counselor Eddington, I think there's some question as to how accurate that information was in the first place, back in 2008, and that's why the request that came earlier this year to update the report.
Which we don't have. My second question, maybe to Mr. Chapman, you mentioned 4%. What would that be for the average homeowner? How much would that be roughly?
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, 4% would equate to roughly $40.
Forty bucks.
For the average household.
Thank you. And what would it, well, I'm sorry, this is probably an unfair question, but what would it cost? I'm sorry, I'll skip that question. I may, I want to add, Mr. Mayor, that if we do anything speedier than what we're looking at, that we should seriously look at seniors, shut-ins, and handicapped people to see how we can either clarify the help that's available to them or do more to help them.
Counselor Singh and Davey, you have comments or questions? Comment, Counselor Singh?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead on your question.
Thank you. I should have asked this earlier. With the public consultation that's still remaining to happen, how extensive is that going to be? And I'm not sure if it's a fair question, but relative exercise or the magnitude of that exercise and related cost approximations would be comfortable with.
Mr. Taggy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, that's one area where I really don't have the costing yet. Staff had not developed the program as to the extent of the consultation and what the cost may look like. But obviously, I can say this, that the consultation will have to be quite extensive to make sure that we are not designing a system that only is supported by a small number of citizens, and if we change the policy in terms of the service level, then there has to be a good amount of support from public towards that.
Okay, I appreciate that, and as we should. It should be as comprehensive as possible, if you're actually going to go that route. But you also said in your earlier comment, when I asked before, that with the work that's already gone in place, that we do have the financial implications at this point. We are close to those numbers?
We are fairly close to those numbers. We'll still refine a little bit, but I think, yes, we do have those numbers.
If staff are directed to at least bring forward some of those costing, so we know well in advance before staff go ahead with the further process of public consultation, so we at least know we know what we're looking at, and community as a whole has a more realistic picture as to what we're looking at, can that be done in the early year?
Well, if it's the wish of council, I certainly have the numbers. I can provide them to you right now, and if that will decide, that will make you decide which direction you want to take, I'm certainly quite prepared to give you some approximate numbers.
No, I think it needs to be in a report format. I'm not asking you to reiterate those numbers on the fly, that's okay, but I just wanted to know if I wanted to make a recommendation for that report to come in sooner. So if there is a change, even if there's, you know, supermajority of council that can change the initial direction, if that's what we want to do, perhaps we can look at that. I'm not proposing that right now. I think that we need to look at the actual numbers before we make that decision, but anyways, I'll make those comments.
Okay. Counselor Hernandez, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I guess my question is relating to what the delegate had mentioned with regards to, did the report at all target any, like, seniors at all, like, the programs that he had mentioned?
The report, and as I said, it's not complete, but depending on the option chosen in the report, if the option selected by council is to, for the city to clear all the sidewalks across the city, then obviously, two questions disappear. One question is bylaw enforcement, and the second question is in terms of special concession for certain citizens in the community, except for one part, which may be if council decides to choose that option, then there will, there may be a suboption to perhaps provide relief to those people who may not be able to afford the cost of sidewalk clearing.
Okay. I want to key back in for comments after.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, one question, and then one question probably of you, Mr. Mayor. My first question would be to probably Victoria, and my question would be, we do have a number of services that are provided from organizations throughout the city to help people with snow clearing. Is that something we can put on our website and do that in the short term?
There'd be no problem doing that. Connecting community members to different resources is something that could be taken care of quite easily.
Okay. I think that that would be something good in the short term to help us through this year. My question for you, Mr. Mayor, is, we don't have a motion on the floor, other than something that's somewhat not related to the current, I understand, I'll dispel it out. I understand Counselor Marsh wants to bring something with regards to the bylaw for whether it should go to the pavement or not. I'm not sure exactly where she's going. I understand that. But that's different than what is actually in the unfinished business, so I'm not suggesting that she can't bring that forward. What I am suggesting is, I'm not sure why we are debating when there's no motion on the floor with this. It's clearly just pointing out that it's not being brought forward today because we weren't able to get it complete, and then it's being brought forward in 2016. So I'm not sure where the debate or why comments are going to be suggested when this isn't a motion that's going to be brought forward.
I think Counselor Galloway-Seelock, Counselor Marsh indicated that she wanted to come forward with a motion that I took to mean that she'd like staff to see if components of what was asked for to come back by now could still come back this year. So if you look at A Sub 1, conduct a review of the city's sidewalks, snow clearing policies, and engage in community consultation, I think, if I heard her correctly, and this is a question I have of staff when you're done, if I heard her correctly, is she's looking to see, can those components still be completed this year, or partially completed this year, while the full, more comprehensive report and the consultation that this council directed comes forward?
I think there's clearly two different issues here. There's the one with the sidewalk snow clearing policies, which really means, does the city do it or not, versus the bylaw that has a standard of what the sidewalk has to look like. That's the difference here. Like you said earlier, there's no motion that needs to come forward, because we've already given direction. This council's already given direction, and so this is purely just updating us to say, it's not coming forward when it's supposed to, for the reasons outlined here. So there's really no debate or discussion on that. I think, and maybe we need to hear from Counselor Marsh, so I understand better, but I think I understood her to say that she was coming back with the piece that was brought forward by Ms. Leaning with respect to how much snow is allowed on the sidewalk.
Staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of 1 was looking at all of our sidewalk snow clearing policies, which would mean policies, bylaws, and so on. I'm seeing Mr. May nodding, so it wasn't just that one piece, and I think that's what Counselor Marsh is trying to get at. Counselor Gazzola, questions or comments? Okay, Counselor Marsh then.
Thank you. Counselor Galloway-Seelock is absolutely right. There's no motion on the table, and I appreciate that. We need to maybe clarify. What I would like just to acknowledge is that the direction of staff that we gave, that's been brought back as unfinished business today, was, it was to look at the whole bylaw, not just the, and the whole policy, not just the component of whether or not to do it ourselves. And because we cannot do the public consultation yet, and because we aren't able to make that decision tonight about the larger issue, I'd like to honor the fact that residents last year were very frustrated with some of the aspects of the policies, and I'd like to ask staff, and I don't want to give specific direction about how many inches of snow should be allowed, or specific amounts, but I'd like to ask staff if it would be possible to come back with a couple of suggestions, based on their experience and based on the resident feedback that we've heard so far, if they can give us some suggestions for tweaks for this year in the interim.
Mr. May, can you respond to that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of concerns. First of all, as council is aware, our bylaw division is down by one member of the management team. We have a new interim director of bylaw who is responsible for running the division and is the only person who could effectively lead this work. And so I just have a genuine concern that there are not enough hours in the day before the snow falls for her to be able to complete a comprehensive, well-thought-out review. I'm not sure what tweaking means. I think I would want to have some more direction, because if you're talking about changing the bare pavement regulation, that's not tweaking in my mind. That's a substantial recommendation that was brought forward by the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee to Kitchener, Waterloo, and Cambridge. So, you know, this is, it's a complex issue. I'm concerned that we would not be able to conduct significant enough public consultation on any tweaks, given the level of passion on both sides of this issue by the time the snow falls. I do believe there are likely ways we could improve how we are enforcing our existing bylaws. Our bylaw officers every day use discretion, and so, well, some members of the public might not believe it. Last winter, our bylaw officers, when it got to that absolutely frozen frigid temperatures, they used their discretion and did not enforce the bylaw as strictly as they could have. And so I think there are ways we can look at changing how we enforce our existing bylaws that, at least for this year, could allow residents to see some progress.
Counselor Marsh.
Well, I would like us to see how we can, you know, I guess if it's up for interpretation, and if staff can look at how we might implement, or sorry, enforce the bylaw in a way that's more fair and reasonable to all residents, then great. I agree that we don't want to put undue hardship on the, a staff that's already one position down, but I also think that we need to be responsible to our residents and respond to their, to their many complaints about where things have been up till now.
Okay, so what you're, if I can try to translate what I think you're saying, is that you're asking for direction for staff to come back on the, on any of the bylaw pieces or bylaw application pieces that may be able to be adjusted for this year? Okay, so that's the direction you're asking for, in the meantime, until the full report comes back? Okay. I'll take that then as a motion for direction. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Fernandez. I have several people who want to make comments. Counselor Davey.
Sorry, first, a question of clarification, and I'm honestly not trying to pull the fast one, I just wanted to clarify, for recommendation, it does say council direction requested, so I just want to make sure I understand that because the report isn't done, for reasons that I think are reasonable, we still cannot tweak the process as already approved by council. Is that correct?
Well, my view is that this is direction that council's already given, and we should be, I mean, it was given by this term of council, and so we should be respecting that.
Okay, that's fine. So I won't go in the direction, I'll just, I'll comment then. I have, I think Counselor Marsh is on to the right track in terms of what we can do for this winter season with respect to the bylaw side. I think we have to, I think staff has to, I guess we can say, exercise a greater level of discretion than perhaps we exercised in the past. I think that's probably an appropriate way to leave it at this point, until it comes back in a more fulsome form. On the notion of sidewalk winter maintenance, I, in other words, the city going out and clearing the sidewalks and absorbing that into the tax base, I think it's appropriate to comment on that now, since we're at that stage. I've heard a number of different viewpoints, that we should do it, we shouldn't do it, et cetera. My overriding concern is, quite frankly, we have tremendous pressures already in our operations. We have tremendous pressures in terms of our finances, not the least of which, and I think this is, I think this is an actual comparable one, and that's the, you know, our obvious water and sewer costs that we're going to be facing in the future. So being that this winter maintenance piece will be, again, the old estimate is $4 million a year, around 4% on the tax base, I think if it is remotely possible, and I may bring this forward in the future, and it's not terribly costly to have a referendum, I think this is in a situation where we put it back to the people and ask them, do you want us to clear the sidewalks, and do you want to pay for it? Because that makes the calculation very simple, because in the past, the people have said they want us to bring in budgets at the rate of inflation, and I'm not sure how we would be able to do that or accommodate that, putting in this. And I'm not sure how we would be able to do that or accommodate that, putting in this huge new service cost. So if we do have a referendum in 2018, then it's very, it's very simple in that it gets added to the tax, it gets added to the budget that year over and above our regular inflationary cost increases. I think that's the cleanest way of dealing with it and I may push that in the future if the cost piece works out.
Counsel Singh.
Yes, thank you. And kind of similar to the earlier comments, I agree with the direction that we're going that we do need a more prompt review on the existing bylaw for snow clearing. I think there is a lot of missing, like, lack of understanding of how the bylaw is being addressed and that's one of the reasons why we are getting a lot of concerns coming back from the residents based on the wording of the bylaw. I respect that the department is understaffed. So if nothing else, I will leave it in the discretion of the department that, I guess, a little more leeway be given as we're looking at that bylaw and hopefully correcting some of the language around it. As for clearing sidewalks, snow clearing operated by the city, I think, you know, through my questions and I've said earlier comments too, I think this is, this is going to be an empty exercise where ultimately the cost is going to be just prohibitive based on the many other demands that we have. I live on a crescent and I would be happy if just my street got plowed fast enough so that I'm not stuck in home for at least a day before sometimes the snowplow will get to it. And I'm sure, I've heard this from many other residents as well. Perhaps I don't complain to my ward councilors as much as they complain to me, but it is a concern. It's not something that we can just overlook when we have existing demands on our operations department in meeting a higher standard of service delivery that we're still striving to do before we start considering adding on additional weight to the department. My effort would be to at least have that review of the cost before we do go through the, you know, the process of outlining what the public consultation is going to look like. As I said, the cost itself may be so high and prohibitive that we may look at it and say, you know, this is not something we can do right now, perhaps in the future. So if staff are close to what the costing is around that model, perhaps even information can be sent to council so that we can individually make our own decisions and perhaps act a little bit more promptly on it and bringing back perhaps a reconsideration of what the earlier motion was. It's not perhaps something that we need to talk about today, but as I said, if staff can please bring, bring forward those numbers to council, it may help us to give better direction. I'm not going to talk about the referendum. I appreciate that's something that can be considered, but that's at least knowing what the future implicated cost would be, that would be helpful for us to, to see before we consider other directions on that.
Counsel Gazola.
I don't know what time it is, but I will-
It's 10:14.
Yeah, I will not be supporting going past 11 o'clock tonight.
So let's get moving then, folks. Or we're coming back later this week.
Yeah, that's fine. Very good. Very, very quickly, I do want to talk about this. There are two issues here. The one was brought forward by Ms. Leaning and the second one brought forward by Mr. McGaffin. They're two different, totally different issues and need to be considered that way. I've been familiar with this, part of this. Mr. McGaffin and I happen to go to the, belong to the same parish, go to the same church. And over a year and a half ago, Mr. McGaffin called me aside to briefly discuss this issue and how does one go about dealing with this type of issue? And I don't know what the answer is to either one of these situations, but I'd like to be able to have some information to be able to decide as to what an answer should be. I'm hearing so many figures being bounced around tonight about what the cost would be. The figures, I went back, the figures we have are based now on 2006. And it said in that report that the costs were in the neighborhood of $3 million, but if I read it, there's not a great deal of detail, but if I read it correctly, $2 million of that $3 million was for capital assets. Well, those capital assets, they're not going to wear out in one year, you get at least two years out of them. But that's beside the point. There are so many issues on that part of it that we have no idea. And then we were going to have staff was even prepared to throw out some new figures tonight. When Mr. McGaffin came, there was a lot of media coverage on this whole issue back in February of this year. People were complaining about the bylaw. Other people were saying, well, maybe a good deal, way to deal with it is for the city to take it over. And I thought it was really appropriate at that time for Mr. McGaffin to come to council as a delegate and put the question before council. But that didn't happen. He's been getting the runaround for a year as to when he could come to council and discuss the issue. Now it's too late. Now you may be able to deal with the bylaw issue, but the other, the other, the other thing as to whether it would be something that we would want to get into, that sure as hell can't be put into place for 2015, 16. It was, I would have thought that when Mr. McGaffin came here, raised the question, that we would get a viable report on what the cost could be and the impact, at which point you would then go out to the public and say, here's the information we've got, and here's the impact on you, what do you think? We didn't do any of that. We're coming here trying to make, make solutions without knowing what the questions are. So I don't know where we're going down the road here. I would, I think Mr. McGaffin's request is, deserves consideration, it deserves some answers. Again, I don't know what the, what the response is. I do get concerned that, yes, we have a real burden with staff. Don't staff do not have time to deal with this? And maybe rightfully so. But less than a month ago, we sat at this table coming up with a hundred new projects for staff to get involved with in the coming year. There were actually 179, but 70 or so of them were already in process. And so we threw another 101 projects on the table. And here we have projects like this that we can't get to. We don't have time, we don't have the staff, and rightfully so. I don't argue with staff. Yet where are we going here? That's, I'm, I'm lost. I don't know where we're going. I'm glad Mr. McGaffin finally got an opportunity to come tonight and put his piece on the table. He had to struggle for that because at first glance, they weren't going to allow him to do so. So we need to, we need to get our act together before 11 o'clock.
Okay, with that, Counsel Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Make it fast. Couple of points. First of all, on the bylaw discretion. I've been in office for five years. I don't think anyone, more so on the city staff, did I ever see exercise more discretion and more education than our, than Mr. Turner, who's now in Waterloo. Every winter, I have seen huge amounts of discretion. Now, that's putting aside Mrs. Leaning's problem, but all through my ward, I see bylaw people, and I compliment them for exercising that kind of discretion. They don't come down, you know, like a ton of bricks on people. So I'm having trouble with that part and Counsel Marsh's suggestion there, the, I'm satisfied with that discretion. And then secondly, I find it very odd that while we don't have a report, staff appears to know the financial consequence of citywide snow clearance. I know there are problems at the staff level and I'm sympathetic, but I would like, and I'm sure that the public would like, tonight to have those costs. Because tomorrow, the media, and I feel sorry for them, are going to be trying to report this, to me, thoroughly muddled situation. I share the frustration with Counsel Gazola. I don't know which end is up and which end is down.
Counsel Ionitis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I think for myself, and I agree with a few of the comments that were made, I don't, I don't think staff, city bylaw staff were very aggressive and, and I don't know in light of the delegates' situation, but I can, I've saw it throughout my ward that it was, it was never really heavily enforced. So I didn't, I don't understand how, where that came from in the sense of that it was, it was, it seemed like it was more of a media frenzy than more than what was actually happening. But I think for this issue in itself, I'm not prepared to make any suggestions without, without even seeing some of the details. And quite honestly, I would like to, if we're going to go this route, I want public, extensive public consultation. And I'm almost kind of liking the direction that Counsel Davey's going because this is, this is a significant service level increase and I think, you know, I think it needs to have some significant public consultation. So I don't know what the consultation will be and that's why we don't have the information yet and I understand where we are and I'm not going to put any blame on anyone. Things happen the way they are. It's just, it's just, things happen and, you know, we have to move forward with it and deal with this in a timely manner.
Counsel Schneider.
Thank you, Chair Verbanovic. I would just hope that during this whole process, we can also maybe get a friendly message out. Citizens of Kitchener are great. I've never lived on a city in Kitchener where neighbors haven't gotten out after a snowstorm and helped each other out with snow blowers. It's probably one of the greatest ways for neighborhood engagement after a snowstorm. Everybody's out helping everybody else out. And it would be great if, you know, we just did maybe one more sidewalk, just go down a little farther with your snow blower. I know it's easier to complain and call bylaw, but in that time it takes to do that, you could probably have gone a few extra steps and plowed your neighbor's sidewalk. So I hope that can come out as well.
Counsel Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, very briefly. This is one of the first times, I believe, that I've been sitting around this horseshoe for nine years, that staff haven't brought a report on time. And there's circumstances that brought us here and we all are fully aware of the resource depletion in certain areas that this would be brought forward from. The reason why staff probably have some figures is because somebody was doing the work when the resources were here. So there are part answers, but there aren't full answers. And therefore, the report is not coming back today, but being requested to come back in 2016. I'm not sure what's unclear there. I think it's pretty simple. We've already given direction, staff are just asking for more time because of unforeseen circumstances, we can move forward. I have no problem moving forward with if there's a few things we can do in the interim. I've also suggested that we get some of those agencies on our website to try and assist people who can't remove the snow while we look throughout this whole entire policy. So I'll support moving forward with that today.
Thank you. There don't appear to be any other comments. I will be supporting Counsel Marsh's motion. I think council as a whole gave direction on this issue to look at it comprehensively based on public input when we were originally dealing with this issue back in February. And that, and that request, that comprehensive request was focused based on looking at both from an operational and a policy slash bylaw perspective. We're hearing for, as others have pointed out, that for a variety of reasons, that wasn't possible and I understand that. I'm disappointed it's not here, but those are realities. And as Counsel Galloway-Seelock has pointed out, this is probably one of the first times that I can think of in my time that a report wasn't able to be completed. I think more important than anything, particularly on an issue, that we know there are a wide-ranging series of viewpoints, that we get the right information, that we do our homework, and that we then take it to the public to get some input on this issue. It's not a straightforward, clear-cut issue. It has legal liability issues associated with it. It has budgetary issues associated with it. It has accessibility issues associated with it for people of all ages. And, you know, we've heard from people from, from all perspectives on this issue. I've heard from GRAC people, I've heard from TRITAG people, I've heard from Tax Watch people, I've heard from folks on all ranges of this issue. And I think it's important that we get the information, that we then, you know, once we have all of that, make the decision that needs to be made. In the meantime, if as Counsel Marsh's motion has indicated, we can do a few things for this year, let's do that. So with that, Counsel Ionitski, you're still looking to comment? You keyed in since mine?
Yeah, I just thought of something.
Short because-
Yes, very, very short. Just want to remind everybody that if we're talking about the sidewalks and as a property owner, it's only one-third, approximately one-third of the job that has to be done. Sure, you have a sidewalk in front and you feel the city's going to do it ultimately, you feel, oh, that'll be great. But you've still got to remember, you've got the rest of the driveway where you park your car, you've got to do that because the city's not going to do it. Then when the snowplow goes by in front of your house and dumps a big pile in front, you've got to clear that as well. So even though you're going to be talking about sidewalk, we're only talking about one-third of the job of your particular property that will be looked at. The other two-thirds is still your job.
Actually, for the record, Counsel Ionitski, the bylaw only speaks to the sidewalk. What you do on your private property is your own decision. Counsel Marsh.
Well, I want to thank council for the leniency in this discussion when we didn't have an official motion on the table. I can rectify that. If I could just read out what I have here, that staff review what can reasonably be done to improve how we implement the current sidewalk winter maintenance bylaw and report back within a month's time.
Mr. May. I think the date might need to be December 2nd or something. Sorry.
Oh, can it come to the committee meeting previous to the December 2nd council meeting?
Yes, so through you, Mr. Chair, the agenda's already out for the November meeting and so the first meeting, which actually is a reasonable amount of time for what you've suggested, would be the December 7th committee meeting.
Okay, so hopefully the snow won't be too heavy before then.
Okay.
I guess through you, Mr. Chair, the only other thing I would say, if there are things we can do that do not require council direction, we could do, and could get them done before then, we would certainly notify council and the public about that.
Okay.
Great. That's great.
So, the motion's on the floor. Recorded vote has been called. Thank you. We'll move on then to the tenders. Somebody want to move the tenders, please? Moved by Counsel Galloway-Seelock, seconded by Counselor Davey. All those in favor, opposed, that is carried. Moving on then to the reports of the- Counsel Fernandez?
There are questions.
Okay. We've got half an hour, so-
I got questions on-
Let's get going. Come on.
Number three.
Okay, go ahead.
And they're combined questions. And number, number five, I have spoken to Michelle Palmer Novakovich, that maybe I need clarification from Mr. Teaguey. When we do reconstructive projects, is it at all possible for us to tender out groups of reconstruction projects so that we can get a better price?
Mr. Teaguey.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the first part, my answer is yes. The second part, it didn't always work that way. I think oftentimes what happens is, I think, smaller projects, usually you'll get more bidders on smaller projects than you would on very large projects. So just because the contract size is large doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to get better prices.
Okay. Maybe you and I can have a- Maybe you and I can have a conversation tomorrow at our meeting about this further then.
Definitely. Counselor Gazola.
I have a question on number two.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just curious, this CRM project, we were working with it in 2012. Why is it waiting till now for us to get involved with it?
Mr. Ermas Palmer-Novakovich.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I may be able to answer part of that in that I made it first. So over the course of the project, the provider that was in contract with the region was purchased by another organization. So there were ongoing discussions to reach a negotiated agreement related to that, which took an additional amount of time.
So right now, we are just buying the program? We're not buying any consulting time?
The recommendation that's before you is for the implementation and setup of the system. The licensing costs are covered within the Region of Waterloo agreement.
Okay, so it shows here that there's going to be $450,000 of staff time. But does that mean we're doing all the work, or is the seller of the software doing anything?
Ms. Miller.
Through the mayor. The $450,000 is for two contract staff, two years' contract each, and that's for the implementation of the program. So the region paid the upfront cost for the software and the licensing?
No, okay, I appreciate all that. So the $450,000 is staff we're going to hire for two years then?
Right, one has been hired.
And this is going to be in place by when? Because we've been waiting for a considerable period of time. When will it be functional?
Spring of 2016.
The spring of 2016, a few months from now. Okay, thank you. I also have a question on the ash trees.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just curious, we're just letting out a contract for $150,000, and yet there's a substantial amount of money, there's another $600,000. Can we have sometime, can we have an update on the ash tree dilemma as to where we are, what's been done, and what needs to be done so that we don't need to answer anything tonight?
Okay, that's fine. Staff will provide that.
Thank you.
Okay, so if we can vote then on the tenders. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We'll move on then to the reports of the committees. Community and Infrastructure Services, Counselor Ionitis. Go ahead.
Yes, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Frank Etherington that the report of the Community Infrastructure Services Committee be adopted from items one through eight, sorry.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Gazola.
I'd like to deal with number eight separately, and I wonder if I could ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is that if we approve this tonight, are we approving the project, and then it's just a matter of finding the funding?
Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Chair. If I recall the recollection, yeah, it is to refer to the capital budget. So yes, this would be approved of the design, and then you would see it during the budget process for the appropriate funding.
So the project approved after tonight. It's just a matter of how we're going to pay for it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll deal with number eight first then. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Balance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Finance and Corporate Services, Counselor Davy.
Thank you. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Gazola that the items one, two, four on Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted. In the interest of time, I'll just comment very briefly on item number two, the REAP grant. I just wanted to comment that I will be changing my position from committee since then. There's been some clarification from staff that REAP has actually paid a fair bit more in property taxes since 2012 than our own annual increases, and I think that's enough justification to support the request.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Gazola.
I'd like item number one to be taken separately and a recorded vote on it.
Okay. We'll deal with number one then. Recorded vote has been requested. Bless you. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. The balance of the report, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Davy, if you can bring in the audit report as well, please.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Eric Schneider that the single item in the Audit Committee be adopted.
Okay, Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I was unfortunately unable to be at that portion of the committee. I do not support where we're going with that. I was actually hoping for us to move in the other direction. Let's find, discussions have been had. I would like to have that dealt with separately and have a recorded vote on it, please.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, recorded vote has been called. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. Balance of Heritage Kitchener, Counselor Janetzky. If you can click in, please. Go ahead.
Item number two had already been dealt with on the 1094 Doolan Village Road. The first item pertaining to 48 Weber Street with the installation of new additions. So it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Gazola for to move item number one.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any other unfinished business? No? Any new business? Counselor Gazola.
Well, I have two items that I would like to mention. The first one deals with a letter that was sent to members of council from a community and neighborhood within the ward that I represent, the Grand Hill Village. They're seriously concerned about an experience they had with the Committee of Adjustment. They've sent a copy of their consideration to all members of council, along with an original report that they presented to the Committee of Adjustment. I just ask that, I would hope that council members have time to please look at what they have sent. They have spent a great deal of time preparing the documentation. That's item number one. Item number two, it's a regional issue for you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, it's to do with constituents that I have in the Fairview-Mantitude Drive area-ish. They're really upset. I received another call today from the Country Boy Plaza where they've been really, there's been tremendous amount of delay. I'm told that there was an eight-week project, that now they're running 11 weeks behind. Today, working out there, Greater that was doing the work cut out all lines, all the internet phone lines to their entire plaza. They're extremely concerned that, and the signage is terrible. The signage indicates that it's, there's ways to get into Best Boy, but further down the street into Mantitude, the signage indicates that it's closed and sort of indicates that the entire plaza is closed. And this is a regional issue. I would like to relay it to you to see. There are two issues here. They're seriously concerned about the amount of time it takes for these projects and subsequently the budget overruns that there must be involved with that.
Okay, I can certainly endeavor to get an update for you and the rest of council, Counselor Gazola, and we'll get that information sent to you. With that, there is no other new business. Questions and answers? None. We'll move on to first readings of the bylaws. It's been moved by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Ionitis to leave, be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws listed on the agenda, and that the same be taken as read a first time and stand referred to the committee of the whole. Mr. Clerk, I understand there's a late starter?
Yes, through the mayor. There's one late starter involving listing officers under municipal code chapter 101.
Sorry, say that again.
There is one late starter bylaw with respect to listing officers under municipal code chapter 101.
Gotcha. So they have been moved by Counselor Schneider and Ionitis. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Schneider that committee resolve itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. This is probably the easiest committee of the whole we've seen in a long time. Counselor Schneider. All right, we asked that now, all the, moving for the second reading of the bylaws. Counselor Galloway-Seelock. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Move that the committee rise and report.
Yep, yes. Will you go all in favor?
All in favor? And now you read your-
That the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meaning of the committee of the whole held this state as attached heretofore and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
And that's seconded by Counselor Marsh. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Schneider, seconded by Counselor Ionitis that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moved by Counselor Singh and seconded by Counselor Fernandez. All those that we adjourn, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.